Seeing none, we will move on to the first item on the agenda, which is correspondence and announcements. Dan, do you want to say something about the school board elections question?
Yeah, just as a point of information, we put the key dates for the board election for our candidates to start filing nomination papers, which we got, and also for incumbents to file candidacy or non-candidacy. So the dates are on your board docs and Joyce Hamm would have all materials that are needed for anyone filing their papers.
And just in case people are watching and not looking at board docs, December 1st is the earliest date on which nomination papers can be circulated. December 26th is the deadline for incumbents to file a notice of non-candidacy. And then you have until January 6th to circulate petitions. Okay, and then the WSB survey?
Yep, we have a second item. Pass around the sheet. This is something that the school board association asked us to distribute to all board members. They are partnering with an organization, School Perceptions, and I think the document is self-explanatory, so you can read through that. It gives each individual a separate password on their survey with regard to key works of school boards. So I think that's something we can examine at another time and determine, you know, what use it may be. But I would encourage you to read that and consider completing the survey.
So you want us to do this?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it'd be a good idea. I ran into Luann Bird at the last meeting I was at, and she asked if we had done this yet, and I said we were going to be talking about it in our meeting. She said, "You need to do that," so.
Pardon me, there's another cover letter that comes with this, a little bit more information that we just got posted on board docs later today, so if you would like to read that as well, it's on there.
Could you send us an email to, could you send us electronically so we can just click on our email and just go in and do it?
Actually, it's in board docs. It's also loaded in board docs, and there is a link in the board docs.
Great. Yeah, I was just thinking if it's in the email, it reminds you.
We can do that.
Although, in the board docs version...
Well, if you're scanning, I'm not sure if the links...
Yeah, the links might not work. And, well, they come out, they might, but you have to have your, you do have to have your access number.
Yeah, the paper that was handed out tonight has a unique access code.
So everybody for everybody, so you do have to have that.
But we can, sure, send that link in an email.
Just remind.
You're gonna have to have your separate access number. The link won't do any good, is my point. So I'm not sure what benefit there is to it.
Just remind.
Yeah, okay. And, well, I guess the only other announcement I would make is just a reminder of the foundation gala this Saturday at the 15th, at 5:30, if anybody's still interested. I'm not, they're still selling tickets. The tickets, it will be cut off at some point, but, anybody else have anything?
I've already taken Ken's promo app, which will be auctioned, and Kathy Thomas's brownies and cheesecake.
They do have a silent auction as a feature, right.
That's right. So it'd be great if you guys would come.
All right, then we can move on to administrative reports, and the first item is the superintendent report.
I just have one item to report on tonight, and just wanted to update the board where we're at in the process with regard to creating the plan documents for the teacher retirement benefit plan. If you recall, the final proposal was originally scheduled for the board to take action last month. We postponed it until our November 25th meeting so that there could still be a little bit additional communication with all of our teachers regarding the plan. But then the next steps, what you'll be asked to approve on the 25th is really the framework of the proposal, the dollar amounts that the board is committing to the plan. But then we still need the legal, you know, plan documents. And so at this point, Jared, Nicole, and myself have been in the process of interviewing law firms that specialize in doing that sort of work. And then we'll start that process once the board has formally approved the plan, preparing those formal documents. And then the biggest thing I think that was, issue that was raised with the question is, how are these funds going to be invested? And that's one of the things that will be part of the plan documents are a charter for that investment board, who would be on that board, what responsibilities would they have? And all that stuff will come back to this board for approval at that point. So we'll be preparing a recommendation to bring back. We'll keep you informed along the way with that. And then we would bring that back sometime in the spring, so there's time that once the board approves those final documents, we can then set up the investment committee and so on to have those funds ready to go by the end of the school year.
My understanding is that that committee, whatever would grow out of this work, would be, in lack of a better term, a standing committee.
Yeah.
Because that committee would be our investment in our fiduciary responsibility. Is that your understanding?
Right, I don't, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be a board committee, but the charter would identify the committee makeup. And you're right, once people are, I think we'd have to add in the terms as well as when people are on that committee, who appoints them to the committee, what, you know, but you're right. The idea would be the same, people would stay on there for consistency.
I didn't suggest it would be a board committee, but it would be a committee that would, would have standing
Yes.
as advisory with regard to, it's the investment trust type of committee, right?
Correct, right.
Lack of a better term at this point.
Yeah.
So like a permanent committee.
That was exactly my question. So what would be helpful is if, under number three, where it says writing a charter for an investment committee, if it said an investment advisory committee? Then it's a lot more clear that it's really not us and not the community. It's an advisory committee to the board with investment expertise.
Well, we don't know what the charter's gonna say yet. We're not sure if the, who they, we'll have to determine that as far as who they're making the recommendation to. What is my role in there? What is the board's role? That all has to be determined, yeah.
So, yeah, I think the additional specificity will come out of the work that they're doing right now. That's why it's not more specific than it is.
So, and I'll just add that we're very, there are several experience, or several law firms that do have expertise in this sort of work, and so, including local, you know.
I just raise that because this is not a, like a policy committee or an advisory committee or something like that. It has a degree of permanence and standing which will be unique.
Yeah.
Right. Then the next report would be the MG 21 Charter School Report, and we have Rebecca Fox-Glare and Phil McPhee.
Ian Lo was hoping to be here, but he's trapped downstairs with conferences stuff. So he may wander in in the middle of this and join us.
That'd be great.
Hi, good evening. Once again, Phil McPhee, President of the MG 21 Governance Board. On behalf of the MG 21 Governance Board, I'd like to thank the School Board and District Administration for providing us with time tonight to talk about our school. It goes without saying that our school's very existence and the improvements we have made in our school could not have happened without the support of the School Board and Administration. So let me first thank all of you on behalf of the board for your efforts on behalf of our school and our students. Thankfully, I'm going to keep my remarks very brief because what Rebecca and hopefully Ian have to say is much more interesting and important than anything I could tell you about our school. But I do want to emphasize this. The exciting things going on at our school, all of them aimed at improving the quality of instruction and curriculum we deliver to our students, happen because we are a charter school. Our charter, granted by this board four years ago, is the vehicle that allows us to make changes, oftentimes fairly quickly, on behalf of our students, changes that we believe have improved our school. As many of you here know quite well, change sometimes occurs somewhat slowly in public education. We at MG 21 embrace our role as innovators, and it is our charter that allows that innovation to take place. So once again, thank you for your support of MG 21, and I'll turn things over to Rebecca.
Hi, thanks so much for having us again. Hopefully, you got a copy of our annual accountability report and your board's information. Last year was a year of lots of changes and accomplishments for MG 21. We received a Burby Derby Tech Ed grant for $3,000 to set up our Makerspace. It's electronics/robotics space where students are working on independent projects. We also got additional funding from MGEF to build, the students built a 3D printer for that space. We hosted a project-based learning conference with, in conjunction with the Wisconsin Innovative Schools Network here in June that had 109 people attend from as far away as Hawaii. Our building received new heating, lighting, and energy efficiency upgrades, yay. We added ninth graders to our charter and in January picked up a small ninth grade cohort of students. We added pre-calculus to our math classes, and now this year we actually have AP Calc happening. We added Adam McCormick as a .50 staff member working with us on project-based learning last year. We've added new members to our governance board. Tryst DeGroot came on our board. She's the district social worker. We also have former MG grad Nicholas Dushak as our alumni representative and our new administrator, Chris Langer. We increased our enrollment up to 41 students. We started offering yoga and meditation seminars for our students. We had our first college success class, which is a dual-credit class with MATEC that allows students to earn three credits at MATEC as well as credit for us. We had our first two students complete the MATEC middle college program, one in machine tool tech and one in healthcare. We implemented our new senior project requirement with students completing numerous career readiness projects, including internships in cosmetology, electronics engineering, music production, culinary arts, metal fabrication, automobiles, sculpture, fashion design, and college preparation. We had our first recipient of a Madison East Manona Optimist Scholarship, and we had our biggest class of seniors graduate. To date, 15 students graduated last year. As far as continuous improvement, and there's been two main areas that we've been focused on. The first one is expanding our scope and sequence to be a four-year scope and sequence as we've added ninth graders to our program. And the second one has been continuing to improve our math instruction delivery and our reading and math kind of data collection. So with the addition of the ninth graders, we really realized the importance of restructuring our program to have a four-year scope and sequence that would meet the new graduation requirements of three credits of math and three credits of science. And this is really the beauty of the charter school because over the past summer, we had the opportunity then to go in and create a new curriculum. We built off of the kind of existing courses that we had been teaching and expanded to incorporate new courses. So this year, we were able to offer a construction math class that Adam wrote and taught, where the students learned basically applying math skills to reading blueprints and doing, they did a contractor measurement packet, and then they actually downloaded plans and designed and built these awesome picnic tables that are out front of our school right now, sitting under the pine tree. They're both kind of octagonal picnic tables, and it was really, you know, a great opportunity for students to kind of see their math in action, if you will. We're also going to be offering, we also offered a sustainability and water class that did a lot of water sampling and learned about the Hara watershed. And we'll also, in addition, be offering an advanced construction math class down the road, a field biology class, and like physical science cosmos kind of class. So there's a lot of new courses that we've added to the scope and sequence of our program. We also spent a lot of time thinking about how we deliver the curriculum, and we restructured how we do that. It used to be that we were kind of chucked up, and so there were teacher-led classes in the morning, and afternoon was kind of student project-based time. Now everything kind of runs throughout the day, and the students create their own individual schedules based on their personalized learning plan that they've developed and the classes and the credits of what they need and what they want. And so teacher-led classes are offered now throughout the whole day. The workshops are offered through the day. There's project-based projects and learning and activities going on throughout the day. Students do math every day, but they schedule where it fits best for them. So if they're a student who knows after lunch, we used to have it scheduled right after lunch, and it was deadly for some students because, you know, they have lost focus by that point, and it was really difficult for them to do the math program then. So now those students are able to schedule that first thing in the morning. And so the students schedule their math time where it works best for them. And so we were really able to kind of let them work from the building blocks and build the schedule that fits them best. As far as the math instruction, we've been working on that, and like I said, kind of combining the daily math using the Alex online math program. And so we're offering currently a foundations kind of remedial program, an integrated math class that's geometry and algebra, a math for college class, the pre-calc class, the AP Calc, and we also have a business math. We've always had as part of our program financial literacy, and so that's still required for all of our seniors to graduate as well as part of the math program. So we feel like in some ways our math program is good, but we're still working on how to make it better for some students. And so that's kind of a work in progress. I think adding the hands-on application courses was really helpful to a lot of students. As we are, as far as improving kind of our data collection, we've been working with Andrew Burdell on how can we, we tried to use the STAR assessment, and it was not, we were not able to use it. It ultimately became an issue of them requiring us to have our own license for that, and it was just too cost prohibitive. So we, this year, gave the MAP test again for reading and math, and we'll give it in the fall and the spring. We'll use that data for this year, but we're working on using the ASPIRE tests now. They offer a series of interim tests, and so we're looking at kind of building on what the district is already doing with the ASPIRE and the ACT, and using those tests as our data collection points. And so that's, that is our long-term plan to try to improve this issue because we realize it's a weakness right now in our data that we're presenting to you. Where we're headed for this upcoming year? We have our biggest senior class yet. We have 19 seniors this year. And so we're really excited about that, and already they're doing some really interesting senior projects, and they're kind of out in the community. We have one student who's doing a project on photography, and another student who is looking at doing a project volunteering at the Humane Society, and there's just a lot of different interests that the students have. Most of them have tied their projects this year again to kind of the career readiness choice because that seems to be the most meaningful, meaningful for the students. We also presented to the Wisconsin Library Association Conference last Wednesday, a week ago today, with, we have a book club partnership with the Manona Public Library for the last six years. And librarian Tony Struckert had written a proposal for us to present about our book club, and we were accepted, and so myself and a panel of students went to the conference and presented last week, and it was, I think, very well-received. The new scope and sequence and the new scheduling that we put, that we wrote and worked on over the summer has been in full swing now for, we're in our second quarter. And with some glitches of like doing the scheduling and things, for the most part, it's gone really well and been really well-received by the kids. We continue to have all the partnerships that we've had in the past, though we're still working with Sector 67, for the Princeton Club, the Children's Theater of Madison, Joy and Yoga, Drip Note Studios. We did get another Burby Derby Technology and Education Grant for, to kind of add an addition to our 3D printer. We're going to build a smaller 3D metal printer. We received an MGEF grant to start our student leadership program. So there's a lot of things kind of up in front of us for this upcoming year as well. Also, the big issue that Phil mentioned is our charter's up for renewal this year, so we've been spending a lot of time just kind of cleaning it up. And so it'll be coming to you sometime in the spring for you to review. And lastly, I'd just like to thank all of you for your support. I think it's been a really good year for our school, and I feel like, you know, we've received a tremendous amount of support, whether it was from, you know, Mark and, Mark Scullion and the custodial staff in getting the building upgrades happening, and helping set up a new kitchen for our students so they can eat lunch all together and have a place, or, you know, a thousand other things. So thank you very much. I'd just like to ask if there are any questions?
Hi, I just did, my wife is involved a lot with the Friends of the Manona Library, and I think that they really, very much appreciate it, and you ought to feel good about the community service piece of that. I think it's a very good, good piece.
It's been a good partnership for us, you know. We've been able to go over when they have events and help set up for the events and haul tables and haul chairs and pack boxes of books and do those things. And, you know, in return, the kids are in the library and they're doing, you know, good things in the community. But then the friends have also supported the book club, and, you know, they, I think they bought pizza for us and, you know, other things. So it's been a really nice partnership.
My wife has appreciated most of the students coming over and doing the heavy lifting of the books.
Well, and the fundraising thing, so we'll have to write a lot of compliments about that. One question I have when you were talking about the sciences is just whether you've ever had reason to use the Alderley Poll Center. Is that something that you've shown to...
We have in the past, and that's my goal is to take this to connect with them for the field biology class. So I'm kind of working on that for the spring. Because, yeah, I think that's obviously a natural partner to have.
Well, and I would just back that up with, I know that they've been trying to help, they have a little staff transition right now, but I know they've been really trying to have teachers write the MGEF grants because they've been seriously working, I don't know, suddenly they have a prototype. Camille Zanoni was working on that, but there's a staff transition piece right now. So Bob Miller can give us that name, and one of the things they're trying to work on is really integrating your curriculum with what they can do with you. And so that might help as we build that three-science credit.
That's great.
Rather than just having him take a field trip.
No, no, we would like to do something like that.
That's exactly the model we're looking for, and they'd love to have you help build that model.
And one of the, you know, one of the really neat things about our school is that we do have this individualized PBL project-based learning component of it where individual or students working together can really, you know, do a project and take it on their own, and Ian's here. And so it may not necessarily be that the entire school uses Alderley Poll as a resource, but we would use it generally, and then maybe have targeted students use it in a very specific way for a longer period of time. So I think it's a, you know, the way we operate allows us to utilize resources in our community that way in a really positive way, I think.
First of all, I want to compliment you on your annual accountability report. It's a great report. It's very comprehensive for everybody who has it. I assume everybody on the board has read it, but for those of you who haven't read it, I think it's the sort of thing that, an example that the district could model, I think. You think you've done a very thorough job here, and I really appreciate that. That's my, that was my major comment, you know, things out there. Are we, where are we with enrollment? What's your limitations to your enrollment right now?
So we're right now at 39. We were at 40 and we had a student transfer onto a different program. But our goal is, we really picked up only one freshman at the beginning of this year. And our thoughts are that we'll pick up another kind of chunk of freshmen in January. And so our goal would be to be at 45 in January with additional students coming in.
And are we, are those all non- grown-up students or not?
So that's a, that's an odd question. We no longer are taking directly open enrollment students. So anybody who's coming into our program that's an open enrollment student has come through the district and through the high school and then applied to us. And so we have some of those students, but they were already in the district. We do still have four students that are coming from Invermont.
Last time I talked to you, actually, it's been a while, but you were, we were talking about language programming.
Yes. So right now, we're kind of trying two different things as far as our language program. We have access to distance learning, and so we're working and kind of getting that more established as far as, you know, being, students being able to work with language programs through that. We're also using just basically an online program right now, Odyssey Ware, for our kids who want to do language and chemistry and a couple of other things that we're not able to offer. So we've got a couple of things going on like that.
Are you happy with the Odyssey Ware? Is that, is that working or...
It's, it's okay. I would like to find something that is a little bit more, fits more with our school philosophy. And I really think the way that we're going to go with this is to put more effort into looking at the online thing where the students are able to take, or the distance learning, where the students are able to interact. We have a really nice distance learning capability where it's, there's no delay. It's not like a Skype. It's a large kind of TV screen. I think you guys used it for one of your board meetings.
Yeah.
And so we're hoping to use that for, the Polycom, yeah. And so we're hoping to use that for continuing to kind of expand our language program.
Ideally, we'd like to use the Polycom so as, you know, we could have somebody in another part of the country teaching the class to a group of four or five students, whereas the Odyssey Ware is just individualized one student kind of doing the online program.
And they're not really speaking, and it's not really, yeah.
I don't want to miss the opportunity for, that we have with you and our district for you to innovate and try things out and model instructional strategies that might have a wider applicability in the district.
Yeah. Well, if there's any, you know, suggestions or ideas, please send them our way. But this is kind of the direction that we're looking at going for, for right now, so.
And on that point, Peter, I think, you know, we've always had this absolute total open door philosophy about this school that if you want to come see, however, if anybody wants to come see, or anybody in this room, any educator who wants to come see us operate, we're an open door and an open book. And, and we do think there are some, I mean, I say this as someone who sat there and oversaw a district that was, you know, a school district run the way that it's run. And I think we're doing some fairly innovative things that I think have true applicability in a, in a high school or in, I don't know, about an elementary school. But I do think there are some innovative practices going on here that, you know, in terms of team teaching, in terms of the integration of traditional instructional classroom with, you know, this sort of project-based learning thing that is both in our school and outside our school. Our students are constantly sort of running between things rather than going from class to class. They're constantly, they're learning from teachers, they're exploring their education outside of our walls, they're taking that back and working on project inside our schools. And, and we think that's how the world operates. When they leave our doors, when they leave our school doors at 18, that's how the world operates. That you're not just usually sitting doing one thing for 90 minutes. You're doing a lot of things that involve a lot of different skills. And, and we think our approach to education is, is one that has some, you know, I think, tangible applicability outside our walls when kids graduate, and one that I think maybe more traditional school settings could even consider. And we absolutely welcome that.
Right, I mean, my thought process would be, as part of our continuous improvement process, we have solutions in the district or opportunity to look at solutions in our district. We have, you know, and we have an issue someplace or some problem that we want to improve.
Sure.
If you have, you know, a model for us and if you have, or thoughts about that. Because, you know, I just have to look at this accountability part and realize that you people are on the ball. I'm not saying, I'm not saying that other people in this district aren't on the ball, but, you know, you've got, you clearly, clearly are of a good focus on what you're doing.
Student engagement in social studies at the high school level. We take a week-long architecture tour of Madison, which is a wonderful city to explore architecture. I mean, to me, that's the kind of thing that we can do. And I'm sure there's other, you know, sort of field trips out there that are being done that way. But that's one of the things I think that is, we think sort of outside the box. We try to engage our students. For students, for most students, learning about civics might be, you know, not terribly interesting, but to go down to the Capitol, to go down to the courthouse, to go see Frank Lloyd Wright's buildings in this town. I mean, that's the kind of stuff that I think that we're able to do that engages our students. Remember, we're, we're dealing with a cohort of students who traditionally have not been as engaged with their education as, as a lot of students are. And so these guys work really, really, really extraordinarily hard to find ways to engage kids. And, and I really think we're doing some interesting stuff.
But we don't have this binomial distribution, but by, by free-kated distribution of students where there's some aren't engaged and everybody else is engaged. We have a continuum.
Yes, absolutely.
Things that you're developing, that you're working on can have greater applicability outside your, outside your home. Thank you.
Oh, that is just a comment. I just want to say it's just been a pleasure just to watch this, you know, this program just run, seems like, hasn't been that long ago that we've really sat here, you know, starting everything up. And it's just been nice to see, you know, all the improvement that you made, continuous improvement, you know, the improvements that you continue to make moving forward. So I'm just excited to see everything that's going on and look forward to, you know, all the positives in the near future.
Thank you so much.
Thanks.
That is one really impressive thing that every, every year when you come, you have a list of, now, of your accomplishments, but what you're, I mean, it has been a story of continuous improvement. Very impressive.
You guys still in the late start, and how's that working?
It's great. It's working really well for us.
You start at 10:00?
They come at 9:00. We still have kids that show up at 7:30 because they come on the buses, and they come and eat breakfast, and they read the paper, and they hang out, or, you know, students come, but we have, you know, it's been really nice for the students, I think.
When it comes at 7:30, do they engage in learning at all or...
It depends. Sometimes they'll go to their computers and work on things that they want to get finished. Sometimes they'll just like start working on a project, you know, go in the art room and work on a painting that they were working on. Sometimes they just sit and talk to each other, and it's more about community building and just... Sometimes they just sit and talk to each other and it's more about community building and just kind of, you know, talking about the new, you know, that we have newspapers for all the kids and they're just hanging out, talking about things.
So you got there that early to, to?
Yeah.
And I think we found that they're more likely to catch up on any work that they're missing in the morning than they were to stay late after school when they're kind of fried. So I think in, in a sense, it's been better. Not that they're always getting there early to do work, but when they do have missing work, we can touch base with them because we're there and say, you know, you were gone yesterday, you've got half hour to take care of it. So it's been good in that regard. And I think they've taken pride in the fact that it was their proposal and this idea that's came from Rebecca's class that kind of led to this whole thing. They, it's like, we're the reason we have this nine o'clock start. It's, it's our idea. So that's, that was a really cool thing.
Uh, we end at three. But, you know, we run pretty much the straight day.
And I'm really proud, proud, or glad you brought that up, Jeff, because I, I look back on that and it's one of my proudest moments is being the government's board member. For how a charter school ought to operate. We had students initiated out of a concern and a view that it could be better. We had a teacher who'd been with this district, had been with that school for five months, who sort of shepherded that and talked about it. And the board said, and Rebecca said, take the lead on this, presented a lot of research on it, brought it to Rebecca, brought it to the governance board, we studied it, we implemented it within three months. It was, that's the kind of thing that if you were to say, let's try that at the high school, it would take months and months, perhaps even years of study. And there's a reason for that. There's a lot of stakeholders at this, at this district. There's a lot of, um, different ideas among the staff that are about to work. But it's, that was a really proud moment for me as, as to how this charter school can really utilize the freedom that's been given to us by this charter to do things really quickly for the benefit of the kids. I, I don't think there's been any question that has been, that's been met well and met positively and led to, in a sense, a better classroom environment for our kids.
I think so for sure.
Well, that, that is the benefit of charters. I mean, they, they're innovative, a little more nimble. I mean, it's just, yeah, so it's good, it's good to see, yeah.
But you can see now why we're trying to build the math science part. I mean, the hands-on, it's exactly.
Exactly, yeah.
Someday you'll help me with that.
Well, thank you again. We really appreciate the opportunity. Um, and we'll, we'll come back and see you in the spring with our new charter. All right, great. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, then that's it. Our next item is board reports and the first item is teacher compensation for the evening.
Oh.
No, it falls in just something at the last.
Last meeting?
Well, uh, there are three other people in the room who can comment on it as well. I would say that, uh, the, where we are at this point is that we're trying to put the last finishing touches on what each of the steps on the ladder would look like, what the standards would be for each of those steps on the ladder. And not getting in exactly what the compensation would be, certainly, but hinting at it. And determining, I think the biggest discussions that we've had has been to determine uh, to what extent should the evaluation system be firmly or indirectly or, uh, because if we have standards of excellent teaching, the evaluation system has to play a role in that. But to what extent should that play a role beyond simply moving people on the ladder, but maybe deal with the compensation within an area? And I think the, I think that we've had a couple of meetings in which I think we've, we've, correct me if you think I'm misstating it, but I think that, uh, we certainly want to retain our evaluation system and extend it. And, uh, but I think it will be used for movement between the color groups or the steps on the ladder and, uh, and probably not directly for the salary increases themselves because we, we feel that that may be corrupting the evaluation system and, uh, for short-term types of gain. But there will be some expectations of continuous, of maintenance of the status that they were within that category. The same evidence of quality or distinguished teaching. And, uh, but we're simply not going to probably be linking it to, in time and space with the evaluation cycle per se. And I think that, I think that kind of got settled. And at the next meeting, I think that we will be dealing with the final phases of agreeing on the standards of the section there and, uh, and, uh, and clearing up those various levels. And then I think the meeting after that, at least that's the plan, is to begin, Jared will have to speak up at that meeting because we're going to be putting the, uh, the money framework in that, uh, not only between levels, but within, within levels itself. Is that a fair explanation? We have other people who are here. That's, I think that's.
It's starting to actually look feasible to me, which is good, I guess.
Yeah. I guess something I would add, just to clarify the timeline, the committee has, um, will have that three times in a row, or three weeks in a row, excuse me, um, after next week's meeting. And as, as Dean said, I would expect us to come back in December with really close to a final draft. So I think by January, we'll be ready for a presentation to the entire board of the work we're at at that point. Then we'll start talking about how we get out and communicate with teachers and so on and the whole, you know, timeline for a Google process. But I think really getting close to final draft before the Christmas break and coming back in January and fine tuning.
And I, I anticipate that that fine tuning will have a, uh, I don't want to make it continuous in the effect that it will go on forever, but it will be a, a, a repetitive dialogue with the stakeholders on all aspects of what we put in.
Awesome.
Well, I, I had a couple of questions and that is, um, one of the things is that it might be helpful to the board, and I'd just like you to think about this as chair, to kind of start moving us into a knowledge base about kind of where you are. Because, you know, half of us haven't, um, been involved in the process. So to start getting us ready in terms of understanding, like a part A. I want to make sure you understand the basic concepts of the criteria that we use and where we went. And this is a piece we still want to do before this time. And if the rest of the board doesn't want to do that, you know, maybe you could offer a thirty-minute pre-board program for people that would like to come and listen. Um, and it wouldn't just be open to the board, it could be open to anybody else that might be interested to just kind of hear about it. I know, I mean, I did try and attend the meetings, but it was just a little uncomfortable because you were, it was a, you know, you were doing hard, tough work and, um, it, it was just a little hard to follow back then. So.
Well, to put a good face on the meeting, I, I would suggest that the meeting and discussion is very fluid. I think that would be a understatement probably. But I think what you're asking is, uh, we will be prepared to do that after the next meeting. Uh, I, I think pretty completely. I, I think it would be, I, I, I think it would be premature to be exactly precise tonight because we've, I think we've had our last input on these variables at, at the meeting we had Monday. And I think we'll have them, uh, I don't want to say in concrete, but I think the concrete will be poured at the next meeting.
I think that's kind of my point is that, um, if you gave us a general idea of kind of where you are and where your criteria are, then if there were comments or suggestions that people might have or understanding they were trying to achieve, then it wouldn't be set on concrete at that point.
Well, I, I could anticipate that at, at a meeting after the, our next board meeting, that we could do that with the board, what you're asking.
I, I'm just asking you to think about that. Um.
No, it's a good one.
Right, yeah. I, I, I wasn't sure what you were asking. If you were asking recap of the whole process?
No, 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 no.
Because you, he's been giving reports.
If you're just asking about this criteria, then yeah, we wouldn't be ready to do it.
Start getting me ready to understand.
That would be after the next meeting.
What you want.
We wouldn't be ready to do that.
I, I think, I think we'll have.
To make a decision about.
I think we will have confirmed all the levels. I think we will probably have, uh, solid statements of the standard to maybe maintain in the level. I think we will be able to tell you how PI thirty-four, the state standards fit into this, how educator effectiveness fits into it and, and so forth. And, uh, now what you, what you won't have after the next meeting, you won't have, uh, dollar signs put on these levels because that will probably, that will probably follow although, uh, and I think members of the committee have ideas of whether there should be big jumps or small jumps between the levels and that sort of thing. But, uh, that's pure speculation until the, until the fiscal reality faces us because no matter what we would like to do for teacher salaries, uh, uh, they're going to have to be, uh, we want to attract and retain, but we also have another criteria of sustainability. And, uh, that, that won't be at the next meeting. That would, that would be subsequent.
Yeah, I, I, I think what, what I'm, I, I think really we're, we're at a point where to come back and do a whole separate presentation, unless I hear interest from other board members, I don't know that that makes sense. I think we need to proceed as we've been proceeding with the committee and let the committee finish this section and then do a report on it. And then some of the questions you just asked will be clear at that point. I guess I don't want to get bogged in that.
Yeah, I'm thinking more about before you actually get to the financial, making sure that you have strong board support on all the conceptual levels.
Well, yeah.
And you've answered the question.
Which we kind of do. I mean, you know, we, we have spent an enormous amount of time going through some more specific criteria. That's the kind of thing where, but the board did weigh in on the basic structure and the basic, the basic piece of it. So I guess I, I just don't want to waste a lot of time now going into.
That's fine. We can quit. That's fine.
But I, I think when we're ready, there will be a report is the answer.
So maybe you want to make the board feel welcome at the committee meeting as chair and then we could listen. That would be great too. Whatever works.
You'll get the information sometime shortly after the next meeting.
Right, yeah, I think that's, that's reasonable, I think.
That's, I was just looking for a timeframe on when you want us to be knowledge ready. And then do you plan listening sessions with the staff? Is that your thought?
Uh, we haven't discussed that, but I think the, um, I don't know. I, I have mixed feelings on it. It could slow us down to do that. And we're probably going, I think would probably begin to be more meaningful to have the listening sessions after we at least have some initial, um, money dollar figures in the, in the proposal rather than to discuss it in the abstract. Because I think they've seen the abstract, they just haven't seen the, all of the standards on it. And I think that, I think that, I, I think that modification of the standards and expectations will come more after we deal with the dollar amounts too. It'll be much more meaningful.
That's fine. All I was asking was if you planned up listening sessions. I wasn't trying to, whole, your point of when you would do that. I just was trying to confirm that you did plan to do that. That's great. Okay, thanks.
Oh, yeah, I, I, I see no, I see, I think it's not only desirable, but no way out of not doing that.
Okay. Then the next report would be the personnel committee. Jessica?
Uh, the personnel committee met on October twenty-seventh, Monday. Uh, we had a, a meeting confer with the teachers and then to our first bargaining, um, meeting where we exchanged, um, initial proposals. Uh, we plan on meeting, I just had it written down in our last, yes, night, the nineteenth Wednesday. We'll have a five-thirty meeting confer and then another bargaining session at six-thirty.
Thank you.
Uh, then the next item is the WSB regional meeting, which was attended by Dean, Susan and myself and Dan. I don't know if I felt like there was much to report out of that, but Susan, you attended a couple workshops, so I don't know if you two have something else to say about that or?
Well, I went to the, I went to the afternoon workshop and there were just a couple of very specific points. Again, it was talking about, um, board governance again, but it was, it was really a great session. It was a small group and actually Sue Gordon, who's the superintendent from De Forest, happened to be there and she brought several of her board members. And so they provided a lot of insight about what they do, which, which was very helpful and solutions for working through some of the board governance issues. So they specifically talked about setting board goals, which is one thing we've done, but we kind of struggled with how to evaluate those. So it was interesting to have them talk about that. They talked very specifically about choosing annual reports. And, um, Sue said if it's something the board feels that they need to do, she'll do it under the superintendent report piece. Um, processing requests for board information, they brought that up. And she said, we respond to that request, um, if it's an incredibly difficult one to meet, then I will meet with that board member and we'll discuss what I can give them instead. But it was interesting to have them talk about exactly the things we were talking about. It was Bob Butler who did a great job of facilitating the group because it did turn out to be facilitation. And then again, they talked about guidance for meeting protocols, which in, in the policy, we actually have seen that McQuan Thien spell actually includes their protocols in their board policy, which is not norms, it's protocols. This is how you make a decision. This is what you expect to have. So it was, um, it was helpful to have that. Now Bob Butler said he would be, because it was insightful to the things we've talked about versus that general board governance program, he said he would be happy to come and he's done presentations for us before and do a, you know, a pre-board workshop for us if we'd be interested in doing that. And I said, probably not right now. But this was a really good workshop and incredibly timely when they talked about those things.
Did you, Dean?
Only thing I would add, I, I didn't go to any of the workshops. I, I joined for the dinner and the presentation at dinner. And the only real highlight there was the top award of the night was given to our board president for, for going to a lot of other workshops.
I apparently have the record number of.
And what, what was the award?
It was the, 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 the level five, the highest level.
Oh, you're a level five.
He's not a level five because they lost my first year in board policy.
I'm glad you said level five because I thought it was a four, but it was the top one anyway.
So now I don't have to go to any more.
That's a size.
I was dinner. The, the dinner, the dinner was, uh.
Memorable, not memorable.
I don't remember it.
What was the usual?
I thought the presentation was good.
It was fine. Oh, no, the presentation was, we were talking about the food. Yeah, the presentation was, was fine. It was, it was a good discussion. I mean, I, I think they're always valuable for the network in proportion to.
John Ashley spoke and again, they did some legislative update and, you know, kind of where we are and what we're doing. It's helpful to hear that and kind of hear where other boards are.
And so the next item kind of feeds into that is, um, I attended the WSB Legislative Advocacy Conference this past Saturday and one of the, um, the new themes, and Mike Black, who's the president of the WSB this year, mentioned it at the start off, they start off the meeting that way, but the, the idea that public schools educate every child every day as opposed to some of the, the private schools. So that was, that featured large in the advocacy conference. Julie Mead, who's the educational leadership professor and educational leadership professor at U of M Madison, did a very thorough presentation on vouchers and independent charters because if you've read the paper, we really know the caps are coming off the vouchers and there will be more of those. They also made the point that as per our conversation tonight, that when you look at the research on how charter schools do nationwide, not just in Wisconsin, Wisconsin follows this, they don't do in general any better than public schools, but the ones that tend to do better are the public charters like ours where there are instrumentality of the school district. They do, the, those tend to do better than the private for-profit charters. And she was pretty passionate about it, saying, you know, if we, if we really look at the reason why the vouchers are, they, they really, you have to ask the question of what problem are they trying to solve and is there any research to support it? And the answer to that is no. And even if you look at what problem they're trying to solve, people in general are, are satisfied with their own schools. Research, um, public schools are successful. Research doesn't show that vouchers produce superior results and in fact, they're inferior or lower than, many numbers. There are good, good voucher schools and bad ones. So they're really, she, she likened it to you breaking, breaking your leg so you put a cast on your arm. That in other words, there's no research to support the expansion of charters and that it's a lot, so much of it is in the messaging. And she emphasized the need to follow the money. When you look at who's pushing this, there is even an investment. And I, I didn't email her to get the clip for this, but where an investment advisor was advising people to invest in vouchers because, and that invest in these private charter schools because they have an endless stream of tax dollars coming to them. So they are, they are recession-proof in that, in that sense. in that, in that sense. And as she said, it's a five billion dollar plus industry nationwide, so why wouldn't private industry want to get into it? So if, if you like everything else, you follow the money, you see what it's really all about. But it is looming large, and it makes it important for us to continue to advocate. There was also a good presentation on the Common Core, actually the best part of that was by Jim Morgan, Vice President of Wisconsin Manufacturers in Commerce, and they are very strongly in favor of the Common Core, and he, he spoke very convincingly about why they believe it's so important. You know, the question was asked, well, then what about your choices in terms of political candidates? And he said, well, on some of the other issues, we aren't necessarily in agreement, but on the Common Core, we absolutely are. They were behind it to begin with, you know, it came from the business community originally, the, the recognition of the need for it, so anyway, that part was also very interesting. Luther Olson and Steve, Luther Olson is the current Chair of Senate, of the Senate Education Committee, Steve Costello is the current Chair of the Assembly Education Committee, he however has, will have resigned as of January, he didn't run again for office. Luther Olson is still continuing as a Senator, is not positive that he'll continue to be the Chair of that committee. They both are very strongly in favor of the Common Core also, and pointed out that Indiana apparently did away with the Common Core, but when they tried to develop their own standards, they came out with what looks pretty much like the Common Core, because really they are pretty good, and in the timeframe, it's costly and very time-consuming to try and make up your own standards. So they talked a little bit about the governor and legislators maybe painted themselves into a corner, and it'll be interesting to see how they end up really handling that. But it, it does become necessary for us to continue to advocate, because if you also read the paper, you know that Superintendent Evers has once again delivered a budget proposal, which would only bring us back to our levels of two thousand and eight, so we're still way behind and have a long way to go to make up for funding. A number of people have made the point that we tend in education to ask for what we think we might get rather than what we really need, and we really need to start making it clear what we really need, that if you really believe public education is important, and the business community does, then we really need to start wishing for something more. At the next, at our next board meeting, we have invited our three legislators to appear, and so I thought it might be helpful to send them a few questions ahead of time, and I didn't really write any, but WSB had some that they had suggested for candidates, they're, they're pretty obvious type of questions, and I, so I just printed these off, and I thought if you have any others that you think of, I thought I'd tweak the wording of these a little bit. If you would care to get those to me by the end of the weekend or something, I'll probably send them some questions before they come. The second act, so the first document I gave you was questions that WSB had suggested be asked of candidates, so they were handed out before the election. The second set is just an example of a sample letter to the editor that this WPN group that I'm going to talk more, a little bit more later, came up with, and I circled the three questions they suggested. We know that our legislators understand the voucher issue, so I don't think that's one we really have to ask them about, but there are some other ones on here that would be worth asking. Another one that I had the opportunity to talk with Senator Miller about a little bit this morning was, if you remember last year, I believe it was in the budget bill, the legislators passed a requirement that the ASPIRE test now be given in the fall and the spring of ninth grade, and because we test with, I don't know if, and I honestly don't know if we're still using Explorer, if we're using ASPIRE now at the end of eighth grade, we give the test from the ACT suite, and it has been the Explorer test, again, I'm not sure if it still is.
No, expired, yeah.
It is ASPIRE for them to, so the end of seventh, end of eighth, end of ninth, and we had requested as, at the delegate assembly last year for WSB, the proposal from our school district was that DPI be permitted to give a waiver to districts like us who give the ASPIRE test in the spring of eighth grade, because we can track growth from then to, to spring ninth grade, and it's redundant to have to give a test again immediately in the fall of ninth grade. There are a lot of districts who don't give it in eighth, and there are some unified high school districts where they have several different middle schools feeding in, where, or different districts feeding in, where they might want to do the fall one, but there should be an opt-out, we follow the DPI. So anyway, that would be a question, I did talk to Senator Miller about that a little bit today, and he said that is the kind of thing that sometimes if you get the ear of someone on the education committee, we might be able to get them to tack on to either the budget bill or some other bill, because it's a relatively minor adjustment, so it's not something somebody can take up as, anyway, that was another question I was going to ask, was about that. Beyond that, do you have any other thoughts on what kinds of things you might want to ask them, and not, not to say that you can't come up with some at night, I just thought it might be helpful to them, if we start off with questions rather than having them come in and just talk about, you know, what their, their agendas are. And that is really all I have, I guess, the rest of the conference was pretty much listening to, well, and talk, they did a little thing on report cards as well, but about the importance of advocacy, and both Senator Olson and Representative Costello felt that it was important to continue that work, so that's all I have on that.
They've already left off Tony Evers' proposal, you know that.
Well, right, right, they have, but I think it doesn't hurt to keep bringing up and ask him why, I mean, well, his, his proposal, for example, included a two hundred dollar per year revenue limit increase, which we know they're not going to do, but they should, I mean, it's, doesn't, not to say that they should.
But they should have.
But it's, it's again, you know, and I, we'll get to this when we talk about the, the Public Education Network a little bit later in the meeting, but one of the things, and they, they differ on this a little bit, on whether they, they need to hear from parents as part of it too, they need to hear from parents and a lot of school boards, they do need, not just the association, but they need to hear from individuals. And while Dan Rossmiller, who's also active in the, in the WPN group that I've been a part of, has always said it helps him when he's talking to a legislator, and when they know the issue already, and when other board members have already been communicating with them, or parents have been communicating with them. So unless we can somehow make people realize how high the stakes really are, because they are very high, I mean, if the vouchers are expanded, there is only one pot of money, and voucher students right now get more money per student than regular, than our kids get. So that's clearly going to have an impact on, if nothing else, property taxes, so, and the revenue limit, if it's frozen, obviously that's, that's another issue for us. So I think it's, it's just helpful to try to, to keep pounding away and try to educate as many people as you can, and whether they don't accept his whole budget plan or not, which, not under any delusion that they will either, if we can get pieces of it, you know, you have to keep, I think you have to keep trying, I guess I don't, well, let cynicism get the best of me, it's, and it's hard sometimes, but I think that's, that's the point. All right, then we will move on to the discussion items, do we want to, I think make a change?
Yeah, I think we had talked about the possibility of changing the order of the discussion items, I misunderstood what part of the agenda, I think under here would be appropriate.
I think, I think that would be a good idea, so without, if there's not an objection, I'd like to move item four, Discussion Regarding Creation of Healthcare Benefits Planning Committee, up ahead of the other discussion items? Okay, because we have a guest here. Alan, you're on, if you have any interest.
Sure. Okay, this item, I wrote just a brief summary for you in your board docs regarding health, a proposed healthcare committee, and just, and, and many of you, you know, know better than I, that historically the district has used an insurance committee, and while insurance, particularly health insurance, plans, providers had to be collectively bargained with all their various groups, there were historically a committee to discuss and, and from time to time, you know, put out bids for various providers and so on, and, and that hasn't been done for some time, and so we do think it is long overdue to reexamine, we spend over, we spend over four million dollars a year on, just on health insurance, you know, premiums, and to do our due diligence and to at least confirm what we're doing is the best for our employees. And so before we even begin looking at putting together a committee, we have invited L. Jaeger from Associated Financial Group to come in and talk to us a little bit about what their organization does to assist school boards and, and school districts in that planning with regard to healthcare benefits. And then after his presentation, we can talk a little bit about how we might want to proceed with regard to a committee, whether we want to use the same structure the district has historically, or something a little bit different, so, just for discussion tonight.
One question, does, does every employee of the district, do they tap into the same plan currently?
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
So we just, we have, I don't know the exact number of eligible employees, it's got to be close to four hundred for sure, over three hundred?
Yeah, over three hundred for sure.
Then they're eligible for health insurance expenses, okay. Okay, so as far as the presentation, you have a hard copy that was handed out tonight, you know, PowerPoint, and then it was added to board docs today, it's the last document that says AFG, MG, Board Discussion, if you'd like to follow along on your board docs. So with that, I'll turn it over to L. Jaeger.
Thank you, appreciate it. While I have a presentation, I often will refer to it, but I'm not going to necessarily read from it, just to make sure that I'm kind of getting the main points addressed. You had mentioned the fact that you'd had a committee in the past, and probably since you've had the committee, two of the biggest areas of change, of course, are the Affordable Care Act and Act Ten. And while a majority of my client base of districts throughout the state have been prior to Act Ten and prior to the Affordable Care Act, a significant portion of those have been adding on since then, and I guess the point there is, while the same objective is still there in terms of making sure we're doing due diligence and we're getting everyone on the same page, obviously the dynamics and the, the methodologies have changed. So with that said, the main purpose or the main focus of the present, who we are, who are some of the districts we work with, what's the standard planning process that we go through, and, you know, what have various districts and employers seen as far as return on investment? Anything else that you'd like to make sure I address, so that it's not just me speaking at you, is that a fair question?
What is your relationship to vendors, maybe, and that sort of thing?
So, good question. As far as who we are and what we do, I don't, we don't have a product, so as an independent advisor, our relationship with vendors, you know, we, I guess I can say we work with any or all, and a lot of it also will, depending on how our contract is set up, I can tell you, for example, whether it be Eau Claire, Oshkosh, Janesville, and many in between, those are districts that contract with us with, and I think the sample contract had been shared, you know, they, they will check the specific arrangement saying, there can be no relationship with the vendor, other than we ask them for obvious information. So as a result, you as a, you get to dictate that, and as a result, that's what we abide by accordingly.
Okay.
Anything else you want to make sure I address? Okay. I'm going to go through these relatively quick, just again, to make sure I address at a high level everything you need me to address. From a size standpoint, who we are, what we do, largest benefit consulting firm in upper Midwest, second largest benefit specialist in the US, we're endorsed by WSB as far as their, working with insurance plans, one of three organizations that are endorsed of that, meanwhile, we're the only as far as endorsed with CISA Two. You see our footprint, Minnesota, Wisconsin, Illinois, and basically in Wisconsin, all the major communities, we have offices. Quick note on net promoter score, Harvard deems anything over fifty as an excellent, this is, we received an eighty-six, basically it's an independent survey just asking our client base, what do they think of us? You see a list of our districts we work with in Wisconsin, and if you look on, after page five in your handout, it's in larger font, so maybe a little better in terms of giving you a sense as to who we work with, but on a Badger Conference basis, we, whether it's Portage, whether it's Monroe, Wanakee, DeForest, all the area districts, Sun Prairie, Middleton, Milton, just giving you a sense that a lot of your peer group districts we work with and have worked with for a significant amount of time. Our service concept, it's not just me that's involved, I can tell you, you know, fifteen-plus years ago, and when I started working on the consulting side of the equation, we didn't have any attorneys, we now have six, a lot of it's to navigate us to make sure we're not stepping on any landmines in terms of this multi-year planning. One of the things we really need to do more than ever is understand, not just make decisions in silos in terms of all the different benefits, but also understand what those decisions and ramifications are in year two, year three, up to year five, which certainly is a big difference in how we decided on things during collective bargaining, which was usually one or two years at a time as opposed to three to five years at a time. You get a sense, in addition to attorneys, that all have different areas of focus, we have an actuary, we have wellness specialists, we have medical director, technology, you know, touch on why, why some of those things are important. That's kind of who we are. As far as the strategic planning process, I mentioned a few districts near, for example, Stoughton, we're right in the midst of completing what would be deemed step three in the process, so when, the, the three specific meetings that generally take place, yeah, there's five steps, but three specific meetings that usually take place in strategic planning when working with school districts, are first and foremost, you identify who do you want to have involved in the strategic planning process? Well, that, generally speaking, those stakeholders oftentimes represent a similar to the committee. Now, the committee would again have a cross-section of prior, you know, staff members, as well as recommended having one or two board members, administration, so again, you have the full cross-section. And then you start identifying the, the first main meeting with all involved, you really, it's a listening session from my standpoint, I need, I truly try to figure out what everyone feels the strengths are, weaknesses, opportunities, threats, in short term and long term from a benefit standpoint. So, once you identify that, the second main meeting really lays out, and that's between the initial engagement and then the second meeting, we will have done all our homework in terms of, of full-fledged audit for healthcare reform, three to five years, laying it out for three to five years, projecting forward, what are the areas you need to focus on, we'll project forward and lay out a comparison of how you have things arranged versus your peer group, and understand, laying out the pros and cons of the different approaches based on experiences, and as a result of all that dialogue in the second phase with the entire peer group, the final step is really mapping the course for the next three to five years. The last piece on step five just speaks to an annual review, the whole idea is upfront, getting the initial track set, so from there, when the if and when the players change at the seats, you at least have a consistent, it's not about the people involved, it's about the process, whoever the people involved are, can see, here's where we are, here's where we were, and here's where we want to be, based on these, these objectives. Do things change? Absolutely, but at least you have the initial course, it's easier to edit than create. Kind of fast-forwarding, as far as healthcare reform and compliance and the financial impact, I touched on it, we do, we do an audit, and that, and we also identify all the key pieces in the short term and long term you need to be aware of, and that's ultimately what we build into the strategic planning. Just speaks to different methods that we continue to educate, the funding analysis reports and financial analysis and analytics, in addition to the peer groups, we certainly will break down different approaches from contribution, plan, design, and market audit as to what you, how it compares and contrasts to your current options. Wellness, I'll spend brief, a few minutes briefly on wellness, the legislation of the Affordable Care Act recognizes completely that healthcare. The legislation of the Affordable Care Act recognizes completely that healthcare is broken in America for a long time. Why is it broken? It's been designed to basically wait at the bottom of the cliff, to wait for people to fall off, and then take care of them. The system is purely hardwired for catastrophic type claims. Meanwhile, the Affordable Care Act recognizes that, and right in the legislation speaks to a 30% differential for wellness initiatives for premiums for the staff. Translated, they're trying to build the fence on the top of the cliff to prevent people from falling off so that, you know, in addition to being significant cost savings to everyone involved, including the district and the plan, more important, it's a higher quality of life for the individuals that avoided the significant incident. That said, wellness has become a significant piece of the focus. Throughout CISA II, we've sat down with the main provider systems, and we laid out a plan. I specifically outlined it. The district supported it. We laid it out to the provider systems and said, look, based on projections, oh, by the way, we're doing projections on the ETF, your local plan that you have with the state, projecting forward, like every, most every plan, you are going to incur the Cadillac tax based on the trajectory, everyone will for that matter. Now, what are, there's methods and what have you to avoid. Point being, wellness, when we approached the provider systems, we said, you control medical trend, you are the medical systems, help us help you, give us a five-year arrangement that ultimately we can work with, where you're engaging us from a wellness standpoint as employers, as districts, and our staff members, you're the trusted medical advisor. We don't want to be the district telling the staff, you have to do this wellness stuff. We don't want to have, you know, the district, the board, or the administration, nor the insurance. We want a trusted medical advisor within the system, within the community, so we're not talking insurance company, to engage with us. In the end, what you see at Wanakee, what you see in DeForest, what you see in Fort Atkinson, and what you see in Baraboo are examples of multi-year arrangements that incorporate in year two and year three, a nurse practitioner that's available onsite or near site that they'll be contracting with, that again, will assist in engaging as a trusted medical advisor. Basically, what we've identified is they can address as high as 85% of claims that incur in a given year. Now, is this objective to transition everyone to go see the nurse practitioner instead of the primary care or specialist? No way. Is the intention here to start getting the fence on top of the cliff for convenience and access, lower no cost? Absolutely. So it's augmenting the current primary care and the current system, it's not displacing. So those are some of the main initiatives from a wellness standpoint. And I'm going to, speaking in terms of return on investment, I can tell you, this spaghetti chart may not mean a whole lot to you, other than to say, we've been tracking since 2002, a lot of the data. Middleton Cross Plains has consistently been the community or statewide richest plan as far as not having deductibles out of pockets from a deductible standpoint and other plan designs, and yet it's been the lowest cost as well. And I can tell you, there's a lot of different methods and approaches that we've used to keep them in that category. You'll see a lot of the other districts, and the common return on investment in the first couple of years is oftentimes in the range of 20%, I'm sorry, 20% of the total spend is the savings. The return on investment, we're talking more than 10x in many instances. I can tell you that the city of Middleton's one of the more recent transitions away from the local plan. They saved hundreds of thousands of dollars in the process, staff satisfaction in the design method that we went through. I think you can check yourselves, but I think you're going to find all seem in check. The last piece I'll cover is just employee communication and technology. In the end, there's a lot of options, a lot of products out there, but if the upfront communication and understanding of what is important isn't completed, and if the backend communication isn't effectively done, it doesn't matter how inexpensive or how great your plan is, it's money not well spent. In other words, you know, people need to understand what it is they're getting and understand the value of it and understand why they like it in order for it to be a value that you're spending. Why do you offer benefits? You know, okay, now there's a penalty if you don't offer health insurance. I get that. That penalty didn't exist before. So why did it occur before? It wasn't just because of collective bargaining, it's because employers need benefits to attract and retain quality staff. And in order to effectively do it, you need to have good communication. And a lot of these slides just speak to a lot of the technology and a lot of the boiler plates and a lot of the methodologies on websites that we assist on a portals in developing to make sure that individuals understand, whether it's electronic enrollment or the hidden paycheck. In other words, do they truly understand the value of everything that's being spent in addition to compensation for benefits? Last piece, survey tools. One of the things that throughout CISA II we've done is satisfaction surveys. We try to establish a norm that all the CISA II districts that participate wish to have. And that way, you're asking the same questions about districts, and you can gauge where you're above or below the norm and where you're below, we address accordingly. Just food for thought. That's everything I have for present.
I think, I think one of the things when, since I've been on the board, I guess it struck me when I think when we got into the relatively new insurance arrangement last time.
Oh, the 12.6.
Right. Is our, kind of being the recipient, not getting that, but being, being on the chat line that our, our teachers have and so forth, of the, a lot of the individual concerns that they have. I have a child with a, a particular condition. I've been going to such and such a clinic and that sort of thing. Now, I'm having to go to a new one. Does anybody know I'm concerned about this or that? It seems to me that, that out of hundreds of employees, that there's a, that there's a wide range of individual needs that if data were collected on them, that at least you could aggregate a lot of them. How do you go about assessing the individual needs other than, I mean, talking about making sure the grassroots has been assessed as opposed to simply dealing with the overall benefits of a plan by a committee that may not even be participating in the plan and that sort of thing?
Sure.
Am I, am I clear?
I think so. I'll give it a shot. You can tell me if I'm not. Is that fair?
Well, we have, we have hundreds of employees. They all have individual needs.
Sure.
And how do you aggregate those so that the plans, or the specifications for those plans that are being proposed are largely, are largely met? And that's different than people like me who have coverage that are outside of the plan and are well-covered by insurance. I, I don't worry or think about that.
Sure. Well, a couple of things. First of all, having gone through this mostly during the time of collective bargaining, the process that we established, including what you ident, what I identified in the presentation, also includes a contractual review to make sure, A, you're not, you're not missing anything from, all things are covered, which was part of your question, all the specific individual health conditions. You want to make sure all the contractual arrangements are consistent and inclusive. The second part of your question is as far as making sure you have access to all the providers that, you know, in the end, the equation's broken down into three buckets: provider access, plan, contract language, and price. And it's not just the price, I mean, to your point, you need to make sure all three are addressed. And that's certainly in the process of asking, as well as reviewing the, the contract is part of the process.
I'm still kind of out here on this. Well, first of all, I didn't have a set of time, so I wasn't able to kind of explore what you do. And I did kind of try and look at that. So I guess my general question is, what do you do? So my thoughts are, do you evaluate health plans or benefit plans, and then make recommendations to school districts in terms of, kind of, this is a plan for this amount of money, here's another plan for this amount of money, and then you make a recommendation based on the population? Is that a piece of what you do?
I'm not sure I'd describe it that way. I, I think a better way of describing would be, from the historical approach, again, starting from the days of collective bargaining, was more of being an architect. In other words, what is it that the staff wants, needs, and has? And if there's, you know, in that equation, are there better ways of approaching it? And then if yes, asking, or in many ways throughout CISA II, what we've done as a collection of districts, telling the providers, this is what we want.
And then what happens then?
They say yes or no.
Or they make a proposal?
Yeah.
We get a proposal from them, and they say yes or, well, we tell them what we want, and they say yes or no, as opposed to going out for bids.
Right.
It's more of, here's what we need based on the discussion and collective feedback.
You, so what you do is you do a needs assessment for a district, and then you go out and approach providers in terms of what you think based on your needs assessment the district needs?
I would actually, yeah, from the proposal request, if you will, the committee would be involved in reviewing what is being sent before it's sent. So it's not, you know, me just unanimously doing it, but yes.
So like, let's say, let's say in your, again, I'm still out there.
Sure.
So if you were going to provide services to our district right now, what would you do first?
Your Affordable Care Act audit.
And what would that be?
What would that be?
Yes.
About 40 different items that we go through to make sure, you know, from a compliance standpoint, where you are and where you need to be in five years. So it's short-term.
So in terms of the healthcare services that are being provided by the, so for instance, if we have a state plan?
Sure.
And we can see basically what our employees are getting as their benefit from the state plan, then you would do what? You would, does that criteria into a list of 40 things?
Well, the, the plan's one thing. How you are, for example, tracking, and how you are making individuals eligible, and how, you know, how your language is, whether it is deeming who's eligible based on hours of work, those are all items that frankly, we probably spend 80% of our time with school districts throughout the state right now in working with them. You're, many districts have the approach that if you're not deemed something over a point, whatever, 0.7 FTE, if you're under 0.7 FTE, you're not benefit eligible. Or if you're under 0.5 FTE, you're, you're not benefit eligible. Well, the way the law is written, 0.5 FTE doesn't mean anything to the law. They're going to, most of the defaults will end up meaning, if you don't track the number of hours a day, it's going to default to eight hours a day. If you don't track a specific number of days a week, it's going to default to five days a week. And the main point there is, now all of a sudden, may have an issue from a compliance standpoint in tracking hours and who you're offering coverage to. And that's probably one of the most significant categories that we've spent time on in our audits and education.
So you would audit who we offered coverage to and whether we're in compliance?
That's part of it.
And what, I mean, again, we're within the 20.
Did you live in your board docs under the draft client service plan?
I did. I read that during.
Right. So it talks about that Associated Financial will walk us through a strategic plan. Right now, I don't think we know what our employees really want. We belong to the state plan. We don't have any options to make that plan better or make it an opportunity. We're given whatever we're given from the state. But then also, it opens up the door for us to find out. We're unique in Dane County. We have a number of, of plan providers that typically will come together and work together. But then also opening the door of how can we incorporate wellness. We don't do wellness. You know, one, one insurance company will currently allow us to do a health assessment if an employee wants to. Another company will not offer it. When it comes open enrollment time, the health insurance, we just send out a notice. Employees are pretty much on their own on trying to determine what doctor. One of the things that happened with the last state budget, technically, the only school districts that are required to charge 12.6% to their employees are state plan participants. So every other school district that doesn't participate has the option to have a 0% premium for their employees. We are mandated by the state to do a 12.6. But I think what, what we talked with Associated Financials and working with Milton Cross Plains, Wanakee, DeForest, Stoughton, Sun Prairie, is they actually developed a strategic plan. And it made us understand, or they understood what their employees really wanted. They were able to then go to the different healthcare companies and say, this is what we're, we're looking for, sort of at the end of the process, determining, do we go out for an RFP process and see, is the state plan the right plan for us? Or are we going to have three or four different individual plans that are going to offer the same benefit levels, come back, and then make that decision from the insurance company and make those potential communication to the board for that potential change. But I think the key of it is, is going back and involving our staff, not something that is a top-down decision, but finding out what are the true needs of our staff. Because I don't believe we, we have a solid grip of that. Because we've always belonged to the state plan, and we've always known that we can't change the state plan. So it's whatever the state plan is offering. And so what we've seen over the last couple of years has been a number of individuals switching because of price. So we'll have one insurance company that will see a 10% increase. The next insurance company will see a 0% increase. So one year, the move will say, move from insurance company A over to a new insurance company, and now they have to switch their doctors. And they're doing that because of the way that the, the state plan is structured. Not that it's right or wrong, it's just that making sure that what we're offering our employees is having a, a plan like the state plan, the right plan for the district, or is it going to an independent insurance company that offers every provider in Dane County? Or is it going and working with each of those and making sure that we're offering the right plan, ultimately going back to our attract and retain? And when we do comparables, and we ask, you know, Milton Cross Plains, what are you offering? And they tell us, well, they also, we have to make sure that we're asking the questions of, do they have to take a health assessment? You know, if they don't, then their premiums might increase by 20%. And so having the ability to have a consultant that works with everybody in Dane County that has that understanding of the culture of Dane County, and I don't think this is an ultimate end roll for us to say that we're going to leave what we're doing right now. It's just making sure that we're taking and saying that we spend $4 million on healthcare, is, is where we're at right now the right way? Or can we offer those same benefits and go in different manners and have a better service plan? And so that's where AFG would walk us through the strategic planning, doing those surveys, communicating, facilitating the committee meetings, in addition to offering the Affordable Care Act planning to make sure that we are going to be in compliance with the law. And if we continue on our health trends with the state plan, when are we going to hit that Cadillac tax? that Cadillac tax? And what is that financially implications to the district? So once we hit that dollar amount, if you don't make changes by year 2020, this is what your total cost could potentially be. So they're really an overview of a strategic plan, walking us through developing that and making sure that we know what we want as a school district. And then it sort of roadmaps, okay, well, if we want to have more on-care sites, then in two years, we need to be prepared to go to a onsite medical plan. Or are we looking at having more preventive care? Because right now, what happens is, flu shot season's upon us. You know, our school nurse will go ahead and schedule those. However, it depends on which insurance company you participate in, depends if you can participate in the school-sponsored one. Or do you have to be, send in a bill to them separately to get reimbursed? Or do you have to go to the clinic to get it? Or can you bring your spouse or your children? And so really making sure that we're making it a little easier for our staff members. And so we look at that total compensation package. And that's where AFG would be able to walk us through that and make, assist us in making some of those recommendations.
Okay. And then you take that plan, and you go to a provider, and you say, this is what they want. And you have a provider who says, we'll build that for you. Is that how that works?
I don't know if I'd say I'd quote a one provider. I'd say I'd quote whatever one said.
No. I'm just using that as an example.
The committee would suggest.
And so a school district that you've kind of gone through that process with, and they have implemented a plan that fits them, isn't it, would be like, is Wanakee, is Wanakee finished?
Wanakee's one example. DeForest is an example. Fort Atticson.
The question was, which ones have completed? So that if you call and you say, so, how'd it go? How's the plan working for you? How did the strategic plan process work? How did the understanding go? Somebody, looking at somebody like that versus Stoughton, which might be...
Right.
Again, it just depends on what you want to know.
CISA II did it last year. I know. They went through this process for their employees.
Yeah, and they hadn't changed their plan in over ten years, and had January first. Over the course of, the implementation process was one that is over three to four years, where they changed a little bit of the eligibility, they changed the plan year in year two, they changed, you know, and now they, they're implementing a pretty significant change this January first. But in the end, people are able to see the providers they want, and their out-of-pocket expense is not increasing. How it's being done is pretty significant change. And they saved over twenty-five percent, and they're not at four million. They're probably spending more at two million, though, so it was over a million dollars in savings.
Do you have a piece of that that assesses quality indicators?
Quality from a provider standpoint?
Well, from receipt of the beneficiary. So one of the things you talked about was provider access.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so I can see a physician. How do I know how that went? Do you use any quality indicators?
If they're the same physicians as what they're seeing now, I'm not sure.
Well, I thought you looked at different, different plans. I'm not just...
Are you asking if they rate the physicians that are covered, that are attached to a certain level?
There are a lot of health, there are a lot of provider quality indicators that are reviewed, but I think in the end, you know, in many cases, the disruption is not, there isn't disruption, so people tend to see what they want to see.
Okay. So you look for a plan that provides full access, and with the highest level of care, with the most providers, that's the most efficient financially, is that?
I think that's oftentimes a focus, yes. Again, I guess it would be premature for me to say what your committee's direction would be.
It would be the committee's direction, right.
Yeah. But, you know, in the end, some committees, it's maintaining the same provider access as they have now. And some, they want to get more creative from some of the other pieces of the plan operating. It's certainly a long process, but by no means am I dictating to go to one or the other.
The committee does that.
Dean has a question, too. I'm sorry.
Jared, you take a shot at my question. What I'm concerned about is that we're going to have a committee of mucky lumps who will sit down and decide the healthcare needs and costs and access and all these variables for other people. I realize we go back and say, this is what you got. How do we, how about, you've talked to some of these other districts. How have they assessed the variables that Susan just, Susan just reiterated, and needs to discuss here? Because it seems to me that we've got three things to fit into this equation. If we want to attract and retain, we've got your salary, right? And we also have these retirement benefits that I've been on that, I've been on both of those committees. And then we have this, then we have the healthcare piece. The healthcare piece is significant. That's the, that's the biggest cause of, what, financial disruption, bankruptcy, and all that kind of thing, if you have a major stuff. And it's a constant, it's a constant concern. So how do we identify those variables in a understandable, workable fashion? And how do we, how do you conceive of recommending to this committee how they would go about it? And I guess I'm concerned of simply having a committee determine, you know, how you weigh those variables. That we have the wellness issue, we have, you know, I see lots of value, I see lots of value to all these variables. They're all high cost. They all add cost to it. But how do we, have we done that in the past?
We have.
Okay. And that's why I'm asking, are we...
So one of...
I'm not on the committee, and I'm likely not to be, but it seems to me that I either need to know from him or from you how we might, how we might go about that before we approve the process. Because I, I think if we don't get to the grassroots somehow in a preliminary basis, that we'll, that we're going to be going at this like we did retirement benefits at a post hoc kind of thing.
Based on the conversations that I've had with other school districts that have worked with Associated, there's somewhat of a three approach of prong. Obviously, we look at what our current benefit levels are. And so when we are making any type of change, they're analyzed, and those, that information is brought forth. But it ultimately goes back of having a committee that's a true cross-section of your staff. So making sure that you have individuals that are at the elementary level, at the middle school, at the high school level. You have support, you have administration, you potentially have board participation. Then you also get surveys and get feedback from all of your employees. And finding out, you know, what are they looking for in the health insurance? What are they, what are some of their concerns that they've seen? And then bringing it all together. So there's really three approaches. There is never a, based on the school districts that I've talked to, there's never been a time where the committee has just sat in a room without going back and getting input from everybody in, in the buildings that are actually going to be utilizing the healthcare. One way of doing that is similar to what we're doing with the teacher compensation. You know, you walk through, you get input from teachers, you get input from support staff. They go back, they talk with their peers, they come back to another meeting. If there's changes that are going around, then there's the electronic survey form of things, setting up the surveys to everybody across the district, finding out, you know, what is the most important to the least important? And then coming back as the committee and discussing those types of things. And then when we start, before even going out to an RFP or RFQ concept, you know, the strategic plan has been developed. So then that is shared back out, similar to like listening sessions where AFG comes in and goes around and talks with each of the buildings, opens it up, lets everybody know, these are sort of the steps that we're looking at doing, these are the concepts that we're looking at possibly changing, and getting another round of feedback. So there's a lot of communication that's going both ways. And I think that's what's nice, because I think when you talk about health insurance or benefits, it becomes a very personal story. And you start, you need to make sure that you're looking at everything. And most of everybody that's going to be on this committee is going to have, that are individuals that participate in our health insurance. You know, so making sure that we're making the right decision that's going to benefit our employees, that it becomes ultimately part of that total compensation package. So based on the schools I've talked to, there's been sort of three different approaches to get as much input from our staff. So it goes back to that grassroots. And you formulate from a committee, and then you go back out.
And that's been the experience, what you're describing's been the experience with them, with the other school districts on varying basis, depending on what they want.
Yes.
Now, I'll just add a little bit of background about kind of what brings us here tonight for this discussion. One of the very first discussions I had with Jared when I started, you know, back in whatever it was, a year and a half ago, who's our healthcare consultant? He said, we don't have one. I said, you're kidding me. How can we not have one? We've dodged a bullet for two years, the fact that the federal government can't get the act together, an Affordable Care Act, many things getting postponed. So most districts, you know, did that analysis two, three years ago about the, did their audits, and either made changes or prepared to make changes. So that's, you know, one key piece. It has nothing to do, you know, with potential, you know, provider and services. But the other thing, as was mentioned, you know, most districts for years have used, you know, consultants not only for that, but even while they're doing their collective bargaining and so on. And there are a wide range of how districts approach this. I happen to have worked in a district that was at the absolute other end of the spectrum, where there was not a committee. It was simply the board directive to me administratively, come back with a comparable plan as cheap as possible. Okay? That's certainly not the approach we're going to take here. But likewise, to do that, worked with our consultant, bargained very, you know, we did not, you know, work with AFG. Actually, a prior district that I've worked in, the principal, we had, you know, worked with them as well. And so there's lots of different approaches to that. Clearly here, we want to take the committee approach and take a look, you know, all the things that were mentioned tonight. And, and that's why it's critical that we have a group that can take us through that process, not just go out and bargain the best, you know, rate for us. There's so much more to it than that as well. We're not taking action tonight. Later on, when we talk about getting to that point, I can talk more specifically about why we invited AFG here versus other consulting firms that are out there. We could talk about the process we went through with that, you know, and there's a very specific reason. I'll tell you one of the main ones right now is because of the relationship in Dane County, as was mentioned. It's a very unique system here in Dane County with, between UW and Dean, and, you know, the whole thing. You guys are well aware of that. It's very different in other parts of the state as far as what their opportunities are. So that knowledge base here is critical, and that's a major piece of it. But what we really want, so I guess tonight is the open session about everything, about, first of all, the idea, the committee approach. And ultimately, it still does come back to myself making a recommendation to the board. But clearly, I'm not going to do that unilaterally. It needs to be a committee, and we need to have buy-in of our staff. And you get that. And you stated very well, Dean, though, about the whole compensation piece. This is a very important piece. It ties into all the other work that we're doing with retirement and salaries as well. And so it's a very complicated issue. And so there's a lot of ways to go about it, but we initially, Jared and I had talked initially about not having Al here tonight, just to have a discussion about, you know, the idea of insurance we need to look at. We thought, you know what? We need to bring Al in here as well, because he's the expert, can answer a lot of the questions that we're not able to as well. And just, you know, here's what we need to start talking about.
And it was ten or eleven years ago, there was an insurance committee, under the old collective bargaining agreement, there was an insurance committee. And they seemed to have disappeared after that event. But they did this kind of process with a consultant and worked on it, and got to the end. And there was an initial recommendation to possibly change when there's more discussion occurred with teachers' union. And all the unions, by the way, were represented. It's not just the teachers, because all the employees factor into this. It was a very similar kind of, one board member was on that committee, and the rest was then the superintendent of business services and other bargaining unit representatives at that time. They elected to stay with the state plan. And it's possible that'll be an outcome this time. It's possible there'll be some of that, but there'll have to be some tweaking to meet the Affordable Care Act if that's it. So it's a similar process to what we went through before, but it's been before anybody here was here, except I was here as a teacher and not paying a lot of attention to the outcome. But I did follow that process.
My last comment would be, is that, is that if we're going to be attract and retain, this is a part of compensation.
Sure.
It's not just salary, and it's not just post-retirement benefits. It's, the healthcare thing is a major piece in it. So could I also make urging, I won't be on that committee, I don't want to be on it, but, but I think that you also need to have comparables in there. You know, like the stress we had the other night on the salary committee. And if you want to be competitive, you want to be attract and retain, you don't have to be at the top of them. You don't have to be at the top, but you at least need to know where you are. And so I would hope that comparables and maybe using the same comparable districts that we have for salary, that we understand their healthcare coverage, we understand their post-retirement benefits. Because if that is the world in which we're, we don't have to be at the, we don't have to be all at the top there, but we do have to know where we are for it. That, that's, it's, I'm concerned about the healthcare.
Right. And I think that's what's helpful when you have a consultant, because they can ask those questions. I mean, here's an example. We're comparing salaries. We can see that, you know, on a lot of our comparables, Milton Cross Plains is higher than us, but they're also five thousand dollars less than we are when we pay health insurance, and they have the year of the doctor. So when you can push that five thousand dollars that you could potentially put on a family plan to the salary schedule, you're going to ultimately see some of that change. And so that sort of goes back to that total. But you can't just ask what your health insurance premiums are, because if someone has a five thousand dollar co-pay, well, they might be at eleven thousand dollars, but that's not a, someone who would compete against.
It's not going to be a clean comparable.
Right.
At least we ought to know where we are in the universe.
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions? Jeff?
As somebody who's fundamentally opposed to consultants, I understand the need for one here. I don't understand why propulsive aren't getting competitive bids.
What?
Are there alternative providers for this service?
Yes.
Basically, SES, we're going to hire somebody to go out and get competitive bids to save us money without giving competitive bid.
Right. Well, and that's a good question. And, you know, one of the, and we know that we have some work to do on our policy with regard to this, but the, one of the main pieces about why we have the policy that, it talks about the exception with special service contracts and agreements, because it's not just about finding the lowest bidder as far as the cost. The cost is honestly minimal. When we're spending four million dollars on health insurance, and a consultant might cost us, you know, twenty-five thousand dollars a year, to have one consultant at twenty-five, another at twenty or thirty, who cares about the cost of that? When we're looking at saving hundreds of thousands of dollars, it's really the service. And so when we do make the formal recommendation, I'll be glad to go talk through the process and the other, you know, firms that we did look at, and the reason that we are recommending AFG. That's absolutely a fair question. I'll be glad to, you know, provide that. That's more, that'd be an agenda item for next meeting. It's not on the agenda for tonight to talk about, you know, the recommendation with regard to the consultant, but that's, we can provide that.
Peter?
I don't think that this case would consider be a cost, but about the comparison of the services.
Yeah, absolutely. Yep, we can provide that for you.
Okay. Any other questions? Comments? Okay. Thank you. Thank you for waiting. Appreciate it. Okay. All right. Then back on, we're still on discussion items, back up to the first item, which is the policy committee report. Susan?
So the policy committee met and basically worked on a new policy, which we're bringing to you tonight. We're also looking for your feedback on sponsorships and kind of what your thoughts are about that. If you remember, what we're trying to do in terms of policy is get board input on that before we start moving forward. And then we're still continuing to work on the Neola work. We actually have taken the one hundred series and the comparable Neola pieces and been doing pretty intricate comparisons on that. So Dan, maybe you want to start with board policy process CII, where that comes from. Actually, I talked about this when I was doing the presentation on the meeting that Dan and I went to. There's a list of like six to eight things that we needed to work on in terms of policy, and this is one of them. And this is one of the things that was brought to us by WSB at that meeting.
Great, thank you. Technical Excellence Higher Education Scholarship is something that was legislated last spring. And so it is something, is very similar to the Academic Excellence Scholarship that we currently have, but clearly it's specifically towards technical education. And we certainly appreciate any monies for scholarships for our students. Unfortunately, we didn't get a lot of information about it, it came out kind of late. We have to have a policy about, well, how we're going to select our recipients of that. And so at this point, DPI has not even come out with recommendations yet for criteria, they're in the process of developing that. Our school to work people, Sheila Hibner is taking the lead, working with the people in her group to try to have some uniform criteria that the other Dane County schools are using. So with that, we're recommending a policy that essentially says, "We're going to have this scholarship, but you're going to delegate to me to come up with criteria." And of course, I'm going to rely on the other experts in our district to do that. But we're not ready to give you the criteria at this point. If we had it, we'd probably consider putting it right into the policy. But it's certainly applicable to give it as administrative guideline as well. So we're recommending a first reading of this policy, it has some general guidelines, but the specific criteria are yet to be developed. And they have to be done prior to February, I believe February 25th is the time that we have to. We actually have to submit this prior to the Higher, Technical Excellence, Higher Education Board for approval. The other thing is, we're hoping that we'll have this to award, because we've heard that even though this been legislated, they had, did not allocate any funds to, for these scholarships. We're hoping that that will be taken care of. So that's kind of the brief background of where it came from. As far as developing the policy, we did look at using the Neola template, also looked at what we had currently on policy for academic excellence, combined the two a little bit, the policy committee did review it, and this is the recommendation of the committee as well.
Questions or comments?
So just to kind of further clarify, there basically are qualifications for eligibility. And what you'll see in D are the development of the criteria. So each school district is required to develop criteria, then it has to go to a state agency and be approved. So Waukees or DeForest or Middleton may have different criteria that's been approved. So our top scholar, our, the person that we're going to put up as a candidate for a scholarship may be chosen under different criteria than any of the other school districts in the state of Wisconsin. But our criteria has to be developed by us, and then it has to be approved by the state agency. And then once it's approved, it comes back to us to use. So it's a little confusing, but that's good. The one question I do have that I thought might be helpful for Dan to elaborate a little bit on is the qualification for eligibility under C. That's not a state mandate. And basically, you've chosen, it's senior status.
Yes, yeah.
So C is a piece that you've defined what in our district senior status is.
Right, at the high school, that's something that's not in a policy, but they've put in place basically through administrative rules as far as defining how many credits are required to have senior status. And then we also had a discussion at committee level about, you know, a student being here seven consecutive semesters. We've talked about, is it someone that should have their all four years basically at our high school, or should be eligible for transfers? And we're recommending that for this particular scholarship, the student was here for, you know, the entire high school. That's pretty standard in most districts, but, you know, sometimes it is, just being here maybe only two years.
But we didn't do it then.
We didn't, we weren't conclusive about that, we did go with that recommendation here with the agreement we would talk about today.
Oh, thank you.
Our academic scholarship currently does say three semesters. So you could, in other words, come in as a junior and qualify for that scholarship. So this would be different, it would be saying you had to be here from freshman year forward.
Well, that's what I was kind of asking for, Dan, why he, so basically, the criteria for both of those scholarships is senior status.
Yes.
And what you've, and that's, so there are two factors. The number needing the required coursework. And then in addition, to be a, so I, I guess one of the things we talked about is what if you have a student that has completed the coursework? But is, hasn't, didn't have to be in seven consecutive.
Well, seven takes you through the first semester of senior year, so even, you know.
Let's say they finished as a junior, let's say they finished everything as a.
Well, then they graduated from high school and they went eligible. Unless they attained senior status that third year.
Okay.
Sure, that would be an exception. So the senior status is obtained strictly by number of credits earned.
So why wouldn't we just put that? Why would we add the, that's what I'm looking for, is the rationale for adding the seven consecutive.
Okay, that's totally separate. Yeah, the seven consecutive semesters is all about, do you want to make this eligible for transfer students? Because part of the issue, the reason that you might not want to is the coursework that they've taken in a different school may not be comparable to the coursework we have here, particularly in our technical education, you know, track. And, but it is one that goes both ways. Most districts usually require the seven semesters, but as I mentioned, our academic excellence one, we actually do only require three. We do have transfer students eligible for the scholarship. So it's one we had quite a discussion at the committee level. I don't have a strong opinion on it, I, my recommendation would be with seven, but I can, I understand the rationale as well that you'd make it available for all of our, you know, senior students, so.
Yeah, because I guess my thoughts are kind of penalizing the students, and sometimes, most of the time, students don't have a choice in having a transfer. You know, if you're relocating from another state or, you know, it's not your fault.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I would kind of echo that, particularly the word consecutive too. You know, a lot of top flight students might have a semester off, they're off, maybe parents that are away for a semester or they, you know, for whatever reason, they might miss a.
Study abroad.
Yeah, that's, exactly.
It might be nice to be consistent.
Yeah.
Yeah, so then the question would be, do you want to just say three, which is what the current academic one was, or should simply mean we come in as a junior, or?
I think you need some standard.
Yeah, you need some.
I, I would agree, I would, I think seven is high, and I think the word consecutive doesn't need to be there, but.
Or you could do five semesters period, or.
What does the academic, does it say three consecutive?
Three consecutive. So I think that would imply some perhaps who moved in before their junior year, they've completed two semesters their junior year and then first semester senior year.
Wouldn't it be wise to be consistent?
I think so. I don't know, that would be, if you're down to only three, the consecutive, I don't think is as important.
No. So I think seven's a little high, particularly tied with consecutive and.
And that was, that was one of the points that was brought, that Jeff brought up in the committee too, was exactly the point you just mentioned, I know, that, that people are more mobile too, and you might have people coming in sophomore year, for example, because their parents moved.
So to hear consensus, this is the first reading, so we'll come back to the second reading, so I'll adhere consensus on the second reading, we'll make the change of recommendation to three consecutive semesters.
And then Dan, the other thing that we had talked about, and I don't see it here, and maybe it's just up to our board discussion, under level of proficiency criteria, and again, that's developing the criteria, we had said the superintendent and our designate. And I noticed we didn't add that. That allows you to be the ultimate decision maker as you choose. But then you can tell Sheila and the Dane County Consortium to develop the criteria.
I recall the discussion, I guess I don't recall how we ended on it, because I remember there was also the comment that that's in the definition in the policy. And so I wasn't sure how we landed on that.
The, the idea about designate, yeah, the superintendent always designate, it's, yeah.
I would just add, I'd reconsider, it would be clear, because it is, it is my understanding that it, that the criteria is going to come back to you. But that it may be developed, particularly if it's developed in a consortium with Dane County groups. It would be nice to, you had basically approved that and set that.
Yeah, certainly this first year, I'm going to, you know, review it with them. I'm not sure what the procedure is, if I have to sign off before it goes to the higher ed board or not, but we'll certainly work on it together this first year, so I'm fine with that.
And then is, is the board clear on, in, if you look at page two, does the, basically, if you have a tie, is it clear to you how that's going to work? Do you have any comments about that? Because I think it's important that we understand that, because that's where we're going to get feedback. And I'm, I'm, I'm still, it's still fuzzy for me. So if it's just me, that's fine, if it's clear for the rest of you, that's great. So the, the first tiebreaker is GPA, but after that, I'm not sure what it is. And then it just says, the faculty, not the guidance.
Representative Committee of High School Faculty shall select.
Shall select, so you have four people with the exact, they meet the same criteria and they have the exact same grade point, and this group is going to choose one, two, three, or four.
The problem is, right now, we don't know enough about what the criteria are to give any more further guidance than that. In the academic excellence one, it's easier to say, here's a thing we're going to consider, well, next step will be ACT score, then this and this. Well, I don't think those are necessarily appropriate if we're looking at technical education scholarship. And so I don't know what that criteria is right now that that committee would look at. Certainly, we will develop those guidelines for them as well as part of the criteria. And so we either make it part of that criteria we're talking about, or we come back and revise the policy later if we do have something more clear. I agree, is, we don't have anything right now to tell them what they're going to look at, we don't know, we don't know enough about it yet.
So I think that makes sense then to leave it the way it is, for now, certainly because we can't, we don't really have any basis to.
Well, we could, we could add language that says, the, a representative committee of high school faculty members and develop superintendent approved criteria. I mean, I, I like to make sure that you're involved and that they consistently use the same thing. So year one, that's this year, because we've got to do it right now, and we're really pushed to do it. If they, if this money gets funded, we got to have this in place, like by December, a policy by December to get these kids into the scholarship piece. What would make me uncomfortable is to have a group of teachers use criteria one year and the next year it's different. So you have kids who look exactly the same, and this year it's this one, and the next year it's this one.
Yeah, I think we have to a little bit of faith in our high school administration, that, you know, our principal will lead that committee and that we're going to have that consistency, that's their job to do that.
Is every high school going to get one of these?
Yes, and I think the number is based upon your enrollment.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think that, I mean, I, I think that makes sense, given that the criteria have to be developed, it just seems to me that that would be the next logical step.
So again, if, if as a board, you're comfortable with kind of that vagueness and having kind of an unknown group of faculty and an unknown number, select the, let's say there are four that are completely tied, that's fine, we'll leave the policy the way it is.
Seems to be, by the way, it's written, it's going to be unlikely they would have a tie.
Yeah, I'm going to say, what's the likely?
Because the criteria are not that specific, yeah, up to that point.
I would agree, right.
Well, what's the likely they would have the same exact GPA?
I think, yeah, I think it's fine. Okay, okay.
So, so unless you have another thought when that comes back for final reading, we're okay on this policy as it is right now? Okay. And then the next question is, and I'll defer to Dan to kind of lead that discussion. We have a policy on gifting to the school, but we don't have a specific policy about sponsorships and how to address them.
So you're moving to the next agenda item, in other words, right.
Yes.
That's fine, I just want to make that clear. That is the next agenda item, is public gifts to schools and sponsorships.
What I said about 462 was, if they're all comfortable with the end of that and the way it is right now, then we'll,
Right.
we're done, we'll make the changes that we suggested to.
So I'm just announcing that we are moving to the next agenda item, right. Which is the gifts and sponsorships. I, I was just looking at the agenda, because I thought, well, wait a minute, that's on the agenda. So that's all I said, is yes, now we're moving to that, so that's fine.
All right, sure, as Susan mentioned, we have a policy on gifts. This, our policy committee had discussed this a few times throughout last year, and I think we're all in agreement, we need a policy. And we were trying to find some good models out there that might help, give us some guidance, so that we have some criteria, that when we have opportunities for sponsorships, would it be something as, things like naming rights or, or anything else, you know, perhaps even less than that? And right at the end of last year, WSB actually did finally come out with a sample policy, gave us some guidelines on the sponsorships. We also included a sample policy or sponsorship guide from a neighboring school district, Fort Atkinson, that has some ideas, it was laid out very detailed about how they do their sponsorships. We certainly can try to find, there are other districts in the area that have these as well. But as, since the committee's going to be doing this policy this year, we thought it would be good to have a little bit of discussion on some guidance when we develop this policy. What sorts of things are important that would be in the policy? Do we want to make sure that we do have a policy that addresses naming rights? Do we want to look at trying to raise money, naming auditoriums, athletic fields, buildings? You know, that sort of thing, yeah. And classroom, yeah.
Actually, I had never seen this. Well, apparently, if, one thing that someone suggested to us today is that we take a tour of Sun Per, because apparently they're naming everything out there.
Who's it, where's that?
Sun Per, including classrooms, so.
They have plenty to name.
Well, it could be Stairs for all I know, I mean, it's, they're.
Libraries would be a classic.
Boys.
And, and do we want to, when we build something new or renovate, do we want to go out and seek sponsorships? You know, with the idea that, you know, with the idea of the naming rights? And do we want to make sure we have a policy that addresses that sort of thing? Or do we want to just make sure we have a policy that addresses, so if someone comes to us, okay, well, here's the rules we're going to follow, you know, for this gift. Right now, absent of a policy, it would mean just coming to the board and you make a decision, you know, one at a time. We certainly would like to have some guidelines, so we're not.
Did that article in the School Board Journal inform this at all? Did you see that?
I did not, is that in the last month?
Yeah, it was just the last version, the, I'll let you have it.
Sitting on my desk, so I haven't read it yet.
Give some donations to the school district, it didn't, I don't know, I didn't read it, but it was naming rights maybe in there, but that was also in there.
Well, and.
And they may not say anything more than you already have, but.
The evolution of, if I understand, the evolution of Fort Atkinson piece basically was that someone came in and said, "I'd like to make a contribution, but we want to be recognized." And apparently, there was all this stuff about it wasn't enough money for the project that they wanted, so, I mean, those are all things that are going to happen. So the, the question is, do you want to accept funds and allow naming? And the fact is, we have a lot of naming.
That's another issue, things that are named don't have sponsorships with them right now, yeah.
Not planning to change it.
If things have been named to honor certain people in the past, and that's, and they're, that's the only thing we've done before, but.
Well, I think that could be, I think that could be in conjunction as well.
There are ways to work around that, I think, where you can include.
What, what has been named in the district, the auditorium, we have the athletic fields.
Athletic field.
Anything else that has a name attached to it?
Well, we do have a, a piece of land in the front of the building, it doesn't actually have a name. And then we had some things, remember when we redid a pos, a po, what, some of those things up, like the, the bench and.
Well, those are just.
We did memorials.
Memorial lands. Those are different, yeah, those aren't.
Okay. It's more of an item than an actual, right? Permanent, okay.
But it's.
Can you think of anything other than those two?
No, the auditorium and the athletic.
Well, we have.
And seats in the auditorium.
Oh, that's true.
People purchase naming rights for that.
Right, that's true.
And the, and the educational foundation still believes that's a, that's a fun, a fundraising potential to sell the rest of the seats at, I think they were, what, $250 each or something like that.
That was to raise money for the orchestra pit at the time.
That's an excellent point.
I mean, that was, that was why, that was what that was for totally in the beginning, but now that we have an orchestra pit.
Well, the foundation has, the foundation has, has at least informally looked around, I was there. They kind of, nobody took a vote or heavily discussed it, but they just assumed that if we continue selling the seats, that would fund the arts program, which. that would fund the arts program, which could mean scholarships for students in the arts, or it could mean, uh, you know, buying-
And through the foundation.
Something like that, I don't know what-
Actually, Dean is right, and, and I think that's a good point, and that's one of the reasons we're working on a policy. And looking for exactly that kind of feedback from the guests, and that is, are there things that concern you about it that you wanna make sure we address in the policy? So for instance, right now, the foundation is selling seats, naming rights, two seats in the auditorium. And I'm not sure that it's clear to the board, to this board, how those funds are being used. But they're being used as foundation funds for the benefit of the school district. We know that. But we don't know exactly, it's probably going to-
One of those are earmarked specifically for the arts, or?
Yes, that's right.
Originally, I think there was part of the orchestra pit.
It was, it was.
It was, it was.
It was a part of the fund the orchestra pit, but once that was funded, then the foundation, I believe, assumed that and, and simply said, "Let's, let's keep using that as, for art, purposes of arts in general, as yet undefined." I would, I suppose if, if you came to the, if you came to them that you needed a, a new, well, we just funded a curtain, didn't we? But if you just, if you funded a curtain or something else in the, relative to the auditorium or the arts, that, that could be used for it. But I, I think that here's a case where you had no policy at the time. And the foundation has, uh, has assumed a claim of remaining unnamed chairs, so to speak. I, I don't know, that's a bad thing, but, but it's-
We should have a policy to cover it, right.
So there's general support for building the policy. Are there any specific items that you wanna make sure we address, Jeff?
I personally don't think we can do this policy until we do the next policy, which is long-range facilities. Unless we have a big picture, if we start trying to fit puzzle pieces into the big picture, I think we're gonna really tire and hand cover ourselves. So I think we need to come up with a big picture, facilities, athletics, where we're gonna be, where we want us to be, and then start filling in.
Well, again, I think it might be helpful for us, maybe to have somebody from Sun Prairie come, just, so for instance, let's say we wanted to, somebody wanted to give funds to MG21 for that cafeteria space in Nichols School that they're currently using for building projects, and they said, "We'll give you X amount of dollars if you will name this room after me." So if we wait, then we might miss that opportunity.
But, I mean, what if we said move them?
Sorry, Jessica? As far, like I said, I, I don't know if, you know, we're really up against the clock right now to get our classrooms and bathrooms named after everybody who wants that to happen in the next two weeks. I could be wrong. But I think, Jeff, that you make a really good point, um, that I think that the philosophy of having naming rights to things should, should be a part of our overall long-range facilities plan. I think that you really hit the nail on the head.
I mean, as we talked about to the night, we have, you know, the Education Foundation, they've got a lot of them, but they're doing it for a facility, they're having fundraisers for athletic complexes, I don't even know what athletic complex we want, right? So, and I think-
We do know what the money does, so-
I, right. I just think-
But you're right.
Money will flow much easier when you can present a plan also, so.
That's a good point.
That's another good point, too.
It would be a good time to kind of roll it out, if you roll out a plan. Peter?
I think we run into some trouble, concerned about this. I mean, Sun Prairie has, you know, it's the Summit Credit Union baseball diamond or something like that. Being a public entity, we can't discriminate against, uh, different entities. And I think we run, very quickly run into a problem where, I don't have a problem with the Summit Credit Union baseball diamond, but do I do have the trouble with the Smirnoff vodka Nichols lunchroom, you know?
Well, that would be a good policy.
And we could not, we couldn't, maybe we could turn that down.
Oh, I think we could. That's where you could have a policy. You could have your policy saying it has to be-
Oh.
I, I don't think you can.
Yeah, you can.
Well, it's an alcoholic matter.
Because that's-
Yeah.
Tobacco alcohol.
And I, and I would, I would hate to get us into that situation. I think we need to look at that very carefully before we consider-
Well, it'd be a good point to get a legal opinion on that first.
A good point.
But I think these other policies do, I think Fort Atkinson, I thought they did, maybe they didn't.
If you let, if you allow one business in, you can't not allow another business.
Well, and that might be kind of a bad example to make, just because it is alcohol, but it could be any number of other weird things. I mean, not just that, it could be-
Yeah.
Any number of, of anything. And I think, based on that argument, I think that you're very, that you're right. I think alcohol, in particular though, is something that we could discriminate against, because it would be breaking our zero tolerance policy for alcohol in school grounds.
That is true, but we can't discriminate over content and speech. If we allow commercial speech, we can't discriminate over content.
Sound like the Supreme Court.
I know.
Well, I think you bring up a good point. We would have to find out the answer to that, because I thought that it was in their policy, something about that.
It might not be, but-
Well, right, we have to find out, yeah.
Certainly, it's one of those.
But there's a lot of people around us that are doing this, so we can pick and choose the best odds with everybody.
So for instance, in the language in the WSB, it talks about, um, in order to maintain control over the district's educational program and student activities and to best to pursue the distribution goals and orders, there needs to be close communication. But they're talking about, that has to meet your mission, vision, and probably your policies. So if you have a prohibition against alcohol on, on your school district, then it would be, you could deny that on the basis that it isn't consistent with your policies within the district, and it wouldn't be discriminatory. But-
I think that's true, but, yeah.
Well, Jess, can I just say one thing, really, just, before we even really get into a lot of these discussions, that, you know, I, I'm not necessarily in favor of naming anything for anyone, for money, on a commercial basis. And, I mean, we also need to talk about that, too. We can't just instantly, you know, well, what, what can we name and what can we do? I mean, do we even wanna do that?
That, that's part of what-
To me, it's really tacky.
That is part of what we need to talk about.
Yeah, it's not, what I'm sending my kids to school for is to, you know, develop some sort of predisposition to wanna buy something later in life.
Yeah, that, that, thank you. That's exactly what we need to discuss, because if we decide we do want to, we'll work with attorneys. We'll write the policy we need to, but the question is, do we even wanna go down that road?
I think so. I think I'm on the total, on the opposite end of the spectrum. I mean, we've seen many districts have done it, Sun Prairie, I wanna say, uh-
Fort Atkinson.
Fort Atkinson. I mean, when we start talking about getting our funds restricted, uh, when we talk, start talking about facilities need to be upgraded, we start talking about, we need our new field, we need a new stadium. We don't have the money to pay for it. Our taxpayers aren't gonna be able, aren't gonna wanna, you know, most of the time, aren't gonna wanna pitch in the money to do that. And if we can get somebody to sponsor that, and it's done in a tactful way, we don't see, it's not NASCAR out there. Uh, you can go look at Sun Prairie Stadium, it's very nice. I mean, I think it's just the new age that we live in, that more and more districts are doing this. And I don't think we can be shortsighted and restrict those funds from coming in because of personal preferences. I don't know.
Uh, Dean and then Jeff?
I, I would, I would share Lionel's concern. Uh, I, I think we, I think we need some kind of policy that is in good taste and improper and that sort of thing. But we can sit, we can sit here all day and say, "We're never going to name something." But I tell you what, if somebody comes in and says, "Look, Johnny Jones died and he was the famous this or that, and we're willing to have a whole technical education center built and, and there's an estate of $500,000 to help with that." I'll tell you what, uh, the, the speech issues will go by the wayside very, very quickly. I mean, we, we look at the commercialization of UW Athletics, which is a shame in a lot of respects, but it's, but it's buying, it's buying access and evidently advertising pays, but, but it's not, I think we need a reasonable policy. And I think if we just simply say, "We're not gonna do anything," we'll be right back to it when we get, when we get an attractive one. Or, or, or a pillar of the community comes in who, who's, uh, the spouse is, that had, the person has died and they simply like to name the, you know, the social studies-
Resource.
Room on it. We're gonna, you know, everybody will fall over themselves trying to vote for that. So I, I think we need a reasonable policy to guide those kinds of reflex actions.
So here's kind of a piece of the summary. So there is some support for writing the policy right now. But I think to meet some of the other board members' needs, it, we're gonna want a policy that has clear direction on ability to deny. Does that sound right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. That might bring us to the middle.
A policy that definitely any opportunity is gonna come to this board for approval.
Well, I, I think I'm hearing a general consensus that the whole idea of having naming rights as a possibility is something that most people want granted. That it may not be a unanimous decision. I know, when we first signed the agreement with Coca-Cola, I don't know how many years ago, I was kind of outraged by that. I thought that was really terrible for a school district to, to commit to that. And, you know, over the years, I've thought, I've changed my tune, was I look at the financing of things and think, you know, if you can get the money to go in, you still have to be careful about what you do and, and who you sign with. But I think, um, I think there is, there is merit to, and I, and I think the other piece of that then is, the other question you raised, Dan, was, then do we wanna just have a policy and have it be here in case we're asked, or do we wanna actually progressively go out and look for funding? And I, and that maybe gets to your point, Jeff, where if you have a facilities plan and you have a role need, then at that point, I think you might, yeah, you might wanna do that.
That could be a paragraph in the policy.
Right.
Uh, too. But, uh, you know, there's gotta be Coca-Cola and Pepsi-Cola on every scoreboard. You know, half the scoreboards in the state on a football field.
That's, this is exactly what we need.
Do we have anything on ours, Paul? Have we sold out at high school, Jeff, to Pepsi-Cola?
I don't think we have it on scoreboard.
So he just proved me a liar.
Well, we don't yet, because we paid for a scoreboard, but we, but we, I think actually the boosters, or somebody, there was just, they just had a resmine.
So I think at this point, that the policy committee has good direction from the board, that's exactly what we're looking for, rather than to spend time on building policy and then deny of support.
I think Fort, I think Fort Atkinson is a good place to start. I like how they have the breakdown as far as, I guess my only question would be, where do these, where do they get these dollar amounts from? Did they just come up, "Oh, that's a good price, let's charge them"?
They had a committee, remember, with businessmen on it, business people on it, and they, I think, I think when the person made, did their presentation at the WSB convention, I think they talked about initially having an approach by some smaller businesses who couldn't afford to give big donations, but did want some kind of permanent recognition. And so they tried, that's why they came up with all those different levels, so that you could get some, you know, right now, we do that with programs. I mean, if you donate to the music program, you get your name in the program, or you donate to the football program, that kind of thing. Um, and this would be going a little bit beyond that, where, you know, they've got plaques and all, there's all kinds of other things in it. So it's, and then it's, do, you can talk about donating to a specific program, a specific wing of the school, or just generally to the-
But I know we've done that as fundraisers before. I know Bean talks about the, uh, the, the seats in the auditorium, but I know when we did the new playground out at the Cottage Grove, uh, out of Cottage Grove, I believe it was, that was it, not Cottage Grove, it was Tickle Prairie, where we did the playground out there, they did the pavers, the PTO did the, the pavers out there, where people could go out and you can buy a brick, go wherever, and, um, that was a way of raising funds for the playground.
Right. Jeff?
I think if we sell it, it depends on our long-range plan, how, if this is one of the great relationships, or whatever. And another thing we do is if we have a long-range plan, we don't have ten different groups fundraising from the same dollars. When you have long-range fans, you almost have a menu. You sit down with people that wanna give, and say, "Let's talk." And everybody, everything is uniform. You know what you're gonna give for your dollars. I, I give one day, and then Peter gives the next day. He's getting more than me, and like, you know, it's, it's all exactly laid out what, what's going on, and I-
A very good example was the, was, uh, the, uh, the Manona Library Addition fundraiser. We had to raise, we had to raise there quite a lot of money.
We had to raise $50,000, and then the city matched it.
And, but, but, but basically, they, they, they took, if you, uh, if you wanna have the boardroom, we raised more money than $50,000 because, because, because the, uh, you'd get the quiet room was, was, somebody on the planning committee said, "That's a $75,000 one," and the boardroom was, was $30,000. In fact, you know, so in a row of, a case of books is, you know, 500 or something like that. And, uh, so basically, the entire public library was, uh, was sold off, uh, you know, to raise a fund. And I think, I think it was all sold. Now you can't, now the names are all gone, because when they remodeled them, they removed them.
That's right.
But I think, I think we're in a really good place. I think the, basically, we have direction to work on a policy with, with a very clear, specific ability to deny that is not in violation, um, that's not discriminatory. And then possibly to go forward and have some discussions with some other districts about how they built their plans, such as Fort Atkinson. And we'll do, and then we'll report back. That sounds good.
I think there ought to be a separate section in the policy that deals with clear, major fundraising efforts as opposed to one, one-shot deals, too.
Okay.
Okay, any other comments? All right. Then the next item for discussion is related, is a discussion regarding creation of a long-range facilities planning committee.
Can we discuss, take a minute?
Pardon?
Can we discuss, take a minute?
Oh, sure. We need, wanna take a quick five-minute break for these last couple? Okay. Discussion regarding creation of a long-range facilities planning committee.
All right, you received the preliminary report, um, on enrollment from Vanderwall and associates. We still have the final one coming. That will be a nice bound document. Just wanna remind, first of all, the, the board, that that is a public document that you received. We put it on Board Doc, so feel free to share the information or the document if you'd like. But certainly, when the final clean document is, we will make it out, get it out there publicly to as many people as possible. So clearly, we need to do some planning, you know, with long range. Um, so there's a couple approaches that we can take. What I'm recommending is that we start with a board ad hoc committee, a, a three-member committee, because, and that, that committee be part of determining how we're gonna proceed. I think we could probably agree that in a, a larger committee involving community members, other stakeholders and so on, is something we need to do. But as far as the selection of that, those people, uh, how are we gonna facilitate it, who, what type of facilitator? As you might imagine, when word gets out that we're looking at enrollment, Jared and I get constant phone calls, emails from architects, instruction companies and so on. Uh, but there are a lot of groups out there that do provide that service as well for facilitating, for very minimal or sometimes no fees, hoping, of course, they'll get your business later. And, and so, when you do that, of course, you wanna make sure you're not making any kind of commitment, you know, on that. But there's a lot of different options. Jared and I certainly could go through that, make a recommendation, but I'd be more comfortable having a committee to work with that we do that together about developing the process. And then with the goal of, by the end of the spring, by the end of the school year, uh, working with Vanderwall on that enrollment study, to have that long-range 20-year plan about our building needs. You know, there's lots of options out there. Are we gonna look at, as enrollment increases, remodeling, addition options versus new buildings, all that sort of thing. It's a big project and, and we have to, you know, be ready. And I feel good right now, we're early enough to be out in front of it, but, um, we can't wait long. So the discussion tonight is about the process, on, is that, do you think that's a good idea to start with a board ACCO committee? And, or other ideas with three yards back.
I think an ad hoc committee would be, I guess, one of the things concerns me, we start talking about adding on. I guess we have to have some vision in sight, or, you know, what, what's a good size for our elementary school? Do we want elementary at 1,000 students? Or do we want elementary at, you know, that large, at 800 or whatever, so?
Yeah, that's one of the things-
I think that's one of the concerns when we start talking about adding on, you know, 'cause I think-
Yeah, that, I mean, that'd be one of the things the committee would have to discuss, I think. And I, 'cause I think, and the other one's infrastructure in a building. I mean, you can add on the Glacial Drummond, but we already know we have a small, yeah, main school. Right.
If you're gonna combine all those students in one location, what is that gonna do to the, to the traffic?
Right. So there are a lot of things that have to be looked at, and that's where I think if a lot of facilitator helped, think of all that stuff to us.
Yeah, and, and just so you know, Jared and I have been meeting with some groups just to get an idea of what type of services are out there. And, and there was one organization that we met with that has people that, that do exactly that, is to, to look at the educational part of it about, you know, answering those questions. 'Cause when we look at the building capacities, you know, architects will give us a number based on students per square foot. Well, it depends on our programs, you know, when, if very different space needs, you know, for special programming, related arts and so on. And that's why sometimes you don't get a straight answer from us when you, we ask, you know, "How much room do we have?" Well, it depends on our, what our programs are in the building. But that's gotta be part of the task as well, this committee, to really make a determination, how many students and for what grade levels can we really have in our buildings? And that's a great point. How big do we wanna be? Do we want these mega buildings? How big do we want to be? Do we want these mega buildings and, you know?
The other question or thought I had is, what do we want our schools to look like? Or do we want them broken up the way they are now? Or do we want to kind of be more, I guess, area-specific?
Yeah.
You know, one in this area, one in that area, and those maybe be K through, K through five.
Right.
Yeah. As opposed to having, you know, K through, you know, two, and then you've got to go, you know. So, I mean, that's something else we got to look at.
Absolutely. So I wrote my written recommendation about the, you know, committee structure, but if there's other ideas, I think we, you know, if you're not.
So you thought.
I support the idea. I think it's needed. You know, I think the initial report on growth and the capacity that we know our schools are going to be in, we need to, we need to move ahead with some kind of thing, and maybe something other than just acquiring bear lane in some places and so forth for the temporary.
This is another thing, right?
Yeah.
These land trees.
Yeah.
Where?
That's nice.
Would we, at the next meeting, would we, if we were going to do this, would we start by authorizing a committee of three board members? Is that what we're talking about?
Yeah.
And then they would discuss how to expand it, or?
That'd be my thought. We have a policy about creating ad hoc committees. And so by board motion, you can say, we're going to create a, an ad hoc committee of three board members, you know, for facilities planning, whatever we're going to call it. And by this, by according to the policy, the, you know, board president, you know, appoints, makes the committee appointments. And then that would be my idea, that we get the committee together, meet with Jared and myself, okay, let's talk about then how we're going to do this. And we have some suggestions to consider, but to really let the committee make that decision. If it does mean hiring a facilitator that has a cost, we can talk about what that cost would be. Do we need to come back for board approval and all that kind of stuff, and talk through those different options.
Let me raise the question I raised to you privately.
Yeah.
You have proposals for, you have ad hoc committees now, and working committees, you have standing committees. My question to you is, is that if, I raise the question to you of having two board members rather than three, because how do you, how do you spread the workload among, among the board members? I think, you know, because if, I'm just raising that issue. And it would seem to me, you know, I don't know, if you're just thinking you need a third one to break a tie or something like that, I don't think that's probably necessarily a good reason for it. But I'm just concerned about the expectations of the board with the, with the several kinds of ad hoc committees that you're, that you're, that you're looking at, and how thin you're going to, how you think you're going to kind of spread it.
I agree. I don't.
I think that's a good point.
I think it needs to be three necessarily. I'm not concerned about, yeah, having a, you know, votes. I think we're going to look at consensus building.
Right. Yeah, there won't be formal, I wouldn't see necessarily a formal votes, but.
You know what else I might suggest? Particularly, the two made me kind of think of it. But if possible, and I know it's a little more difficult with the composition of the board, that it might be nice to have, if it's possible, a board member from each community. Just because, remember, that brings a whole different, I mean, Dean, you chaired one of the last facility committees we had. And it was, I mean, it included all of these people.
The facility one definitely has to have that.
Well, I'm not, that would commit one of the two of you, for example. I mean, I'm not sure we can necessarily say that. I think we, I think we will have community members.
Let me suggest it's a good idea.
Right. It might be a good idea. And we will have community members and other people on the committee. So I don't think it's.
There were problems last time?
No, don't worry about it. It was great.
Not going to be this time.
If we don't.
I'll tell you what, when I remember, I remember the, I guess I'll dignify them by calling them debates within that large group. First, it was too large. And, you know, but it got down to what drinking fountains ought to look like, and the, whether you've got round knobs or handles or things like that.
I don't remember.
But that wasn't the real issue. There was always something else. So, but I don't think that's, I don't, I think it's important to have it in both communities for, for probably the same reason that Susan suggested it. But I don't think we're in the same environment that we had at that time.
Give it time.
What?
It could be again.
But I also am concerned, because I think people are really stretched, because your committee is still doing really hard, tough work and meeting a lot.
Well, and that insurance one's going to be a huge time commitment, and this is going to be a big time commitment.
And personnel, right now, depending upon negotiations and the kind of thing they're doing. Again, the, the meeting that they did in front of their regular meeting was just excellent, because they solicited input and they got some good data. And, I mean, these are, we met until almost 11:30.
So are we hearing a consensus that two might be enough? I mean, just because if we write a proposal at the next meeting.
Steve, who wants to do it?
Well, we might only, yeah.
Pay only be two.
Let's say if you get, why don't you do this? If you get three, and people who are really willing to do it, and bring that back and leave that up to the board, fine.
But you ought, but you ought to be laying out the other committees you have in mind, too, for some of this stuff, too.
Yeah.
And who you want to serve on the others.
If the board gets defeated in detail, that's coined defeated in detail, you know.
Well, we are.
Then we may run out of gas after everybody volunteers for one, then they don't have enough for the other one.
Yeah. I'll, in fact, perhaps, would it be helpful, I'd do that for the next board meeting, is maybe have a list of all of our committees that we have, the proposed ones, approximate timeline on those ad hocs as well.
Resolution. Looks a good idea.
It's a good idea. Because we think of creating these at the next.
Yeah. The next regular board meeting.
So we should have that list and have the.
Yeah.
Because about three years ago, I think it was a long time ago, my wife says, well, what's this ad hoc hand-up committee? And I said, this committee, I said, it's just an ad hoc committee, don't worry about it. And it's, I, I don't know if it's ever been completely done away with at this point.
Yes, I declared it dissolved at its last meeting. So I expected you to have a celebration. You and Ann could have a celebration.
Who's that?
At its last meeting, we had, yeah, that's what it is. We should go out and celebrate. But she hasn't noticed, because you're still doing the, your compensation one, so it seems the same. Anyway. Okay. All right. Then the last thing is discussion of district membership on the Wisconsin Alliance for Excellent Schools. And that is coming partly as a result of my own work with this Wisconsin Public Education Network, WPN. And there were some documents there, which really has just been, and is, kind of a loose network, kind of clearinghouse for talking about these issues and trying to come up with ways to message and ways to advocate, be available as a support where there are community groups. There are some 94, 95 people in the mailing list. The average meetings will draw 20 to 30 people. Regular attenders have been representatives from WASDA, the UW School of Education, the Wisconsin Business Alliance, Rural School, Wisconsin Rural Schools Alliance, WAC, and then various school board members from Madison, Middleton, Cross Plains, Stoughton, Milwaukee, Oregon, and myself from here. So it is a mixed group, and we've decided, I mean, the main, the main thought going forward was to have a, we were using Tom Beebe, when he, when he was the director of ways and was funded through the Institute for Wisconsin's Future. And he's retiring. He's kind of hanging in there to find, try to find a director. We used their staff to maintain the mailing list, to have a website that we could post things on. Back when we were sending messages to the legislature about vouchers, for example, or about the Common Core, we organized a press conference. Yeah, we've done some things like that. There is a very active community group in Lake Mills. There's another one in Stevens Point. Pecatonica has one. And those people have all kind of weighed in, and we've extended offers to help them with messaging and that kind of thing. So it's kind of a statewide thing, and there are, you know, increasing difficulties with rural schools. So they haven't, it's a, they don't take partisan, make partisan choices, if that's not part of the group, because of the nature of the people who are in it. Some of them can't. So we have some employees from Milwaukee School District as well. So it's, it's kind of the only group that has as its mission clear advocacy. And I know when I brought this forward before, you know, I wasn't sure what the future of it would be. And now they're actually looking for, because grants have dried up, and they're actually looking for funding through memberships. And I know Stoughton just joined recently. Stoughton's a longtime membership.
That's the cost.
And the cost that they, that they invoiced us for, it's based on $200 plus 25 cents per student member. So the invoice is for $918.25. If you were foul last year, I think they rounded it up to 1,000. So they, they come up with a formula by which to determine these. You could certainly join for less also, I think. But I, I guess I think because of the climate we're in, that it's really important to try to keep a profile and keep, oh, Dan Rossmann also, by the way, attends all of these meetings. So it is tied in with WSB, as well as WASDA, as well as OSA, and WUSA, which is rural schools. All those organizations are a part of this group. But it's kind of the only group that has as its sole purpose to keep doing that. And, you know, trying to work. So they're, they're looking to hire a part-time director. The, there is an administrative assistant who's, has been funded through, I don't know if they're using Wisconsin Forward now, but anyway, she's kind of hung on, people are kind of hanging on to see if they can get this funding up and running. They're looking for bigger donations as well. But, so I'm bringing it forward with a personal recommendation that I think it's worth joining this group. And, but we wouldn't take action tonight, obviously. It would be something that we vote on next time. If anybody has any questions about what it does, or what you think about it.
Yeah, I was going to say, what exactly are we getting from this?
Really, you're getting a coordinator. There was a, there's a document on here that outlines what the coordinator would do, that they facilitate the WPN, which is the Wisconsin Public Education Network. That's what we decided to call ourselves. Meetings, maintain databases of members. They'll send out alerts, for example, when there's an immediate need for weighing in on legislative things, which WSB does as well. But this group's a little different, and they have a little more flexibility with what they can do. Maintain the website, manage social media, help facilitate establishment of a public education committee, grassroots groups. And there are some various efforts going on about that. Help coordinate and track activities of various members. Those are the kinds of things that are assigned to the coordinator. And the group itself basically kind of summarized here, where it says that, you know, we focus on internal communication. It's sort of a hub for email, social media, website, planning meetings. We have, there's a partner directory, makes available an event calendar when things are going on in Milwaukee or other places where they need people to attend. It's a group where you find that out. Collaboration involves messaging tools, working on common messaging, supplies event speakers, and is constantly looking for other outreach opportunities. Future growth, we do understand the need for broad and diverse statewide network that engages others in strong public schools. A vision for a statewide movement, understands the need to play offense in the public policy arena, which is still a struggle to find out how to do that. Asking for what children public schools in our communities need, rather than what is politically feasible. In other words, really trying to make it clear what's needed. So it is an advocacy group, basically.
An advocacy group, though.
For public schools.
With BB, it also has pulled together a lot of public domain types of information and policy research on current events, rather than long-range stuff.
Right, right.
And they've lost a lot of their staffing as a result of, but I think they've also tied in from time to time, WAC was better staff.
Right.
In WAC at times, and then to OSA at times, depending on what the issue is. And I think it, I think it, they bring forth positions and data into the public that any of those organizations probably couldn't do alone with, without jeopardizing their position or the credibility.
Right.
And I, I really think that school districts ought to get in on it to maintain it, to see how, if it can get rolling again. And then I think they ought to go, I think they ought to sit down with, at UW-Madison, and, because they have now created a, a research outreach dimension.
Right.
Which I believe could probably provide the, some staffing on it. I think one of the people who worked with it is Jim Shaw, isn't he? You know Jim?
I don't, okay.
I don't know if he's involved with this or not.
I don't know if he's been involved with this. Julie Underwood is, and Abby Stats is UW-Whitewater.
Yeah, I think, I think between Whitewater and Madison, you could probably develop, you know, some, you know, somebody who's in a doctoral program to help out. And, and I think that Julie Underwood would try to help facilitate that if we get enough membership base on it. And I was on the, I was on the advisory committee to create their, their, I was the school board member on the advisory committee to create their outreach policy, policy research kind of committee. They haven't quite gotten going, but they're up and, they're up and running. And I think we ought to support it, to give them a base, so that that can be done. Because this group can come out with findings that may not feel comfortable for WASA to come out with, or the university to come out with. But it's, as a collaboration, it works better.
Yeah, that's been part of the thinking. That's a good way to explain it.
Yeah.
So, any other questions? Again, not for decision tonight, but we.
You really have two options. I mean, I hear our attention was to put it on as an action item for next meeting. I mean, their option is if there's really consensus, I could just, you know, join on behalf of the district. But it might be better to take a vote. It's up to you, how would you like to handle that?
I think we're better off putting $918 there than we are in all the consultants that he's talking to.
I don't know if I want to go there, but I think, but I think that, well, that's how, that's how, that's how Stoughton handled it. I know they're a business services person. They just said, they just pay for it bad. And they, that's what they did. But, but we had discussed it before, so I thought I should bring it back to the board to see what people thought about it.
Now, you got to, you got to be prepared now. As soon as this group comes out with a finding or a recommendation that, that maybe a particular legislator who chairs a committee doesn't like, they're going to ask for the membership of that. And our name will be supporting these nefarious causes.
Well, they don't, they don't take, you know, the basic positions of the group are advocating for funding, advocating for sufficient funding, not just, you know, rock bottom funding.
Well, that, that.
And anti-vouchers, because that's going to have a devastating effect. And so they're pretty generic things that are.
Taking a position on vouchers is a little generic.
Well, actually, I do have to say, coming from a school board meeting where, or even supporting the Common Core, which this group doesn't take a position on that, or hasn't taken a formal position on that. But we do talk about helping each other with messaging, where if the board wants, I mean, our board has taken positions on those things. We took a position against vouchers.
Oh, right.
So I, but I, you know, yeah, you're correct. There are some sitting school board members who don't think vouchers are such a bad idea, I guess. But, but there's, and a lot, and a lot of it is educating people. I mean, I just mentioned to one of our teachers the other day about the cap cutting off vouchers, and the response was, well, we don't really have to worry about that, right? Because there is only one voucher school in the Dane County area right now. And I said, well, yeah, but that isn't the point. The point is, when the cap comes off vouchers, the money goes with it. And it's the state money. And it's coming off the top before we get it. So it does affect us. And that's, so there's a, that's such a hard concept to get people to understand, because people's eyes glaze over, because they don't really want to.
Every place has a parochial school, they're liable to be a voucher.
Right. Well, yeah. I mean, and ours chose not to, in Dane County. And whether they will continue to choose not to, I don't know. But I'll have to wait and see. But, anyway, I, I, I'm not sure I'm getting a consensus. I'm assuming we should maybe, in mine, but that's two. So I think we should put it on.
You'd bring it forward for.
Well, we just had the question raised, is that how we'd prefer to do it? And I think it probably is. We'd prefer to do it.
I think that's, you have to, you have to get board approval.
Well, we don't necessarily. That was the point. But I think we will, yeah. I think in this case, it would be a good idea.
Never mind.
Because now districts operate that way. But, but I think, I think, I, that's what I said. I thought we should bring it back to the board, because we talked. 'Cause not all districts operate that way, but, but I think, I think, I, that's what I said, I thought we should bring it back to the board, because we had talked about it once before and decided not to join at that time, so I think, yeah.
You know, what might be helpful is, when we do our organizational meeting.
That's what we talked about, and, and it's just that this came up later, and I guess I'd rather not wait that long because it's, it's fairly urgent now for them to know.
No, I agree, I'm just saying, another thing that we should probably join is the Wisconsin Arm of the Malcolm Lawdridge, to continue, this is, what, what always happened was Bill Breach, we should just.
That'd be another one you could talk about at some point, that'd be different, yeah.
Make a list. And that's definitely.
Serves a very different purpose, but. All right, then we will bring this back next meeting. Unless there are any other issues, future meetings are on your list, you have another teacher conversation meeting next Monday, and call back for stuff waiting. All right, if there are no, seeing, no further business, I'd ask for a motion to adjourn. All is in favor, so you can go, say aye.
The handbook committee can completely dissolve, can I tell my wife?
Aye. Motion's carried, yes, it is.